The City of Seaside City Council and the Success Agency to the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Seaside Regular 5:00 PM Meeting on Thursday, October 3, 2024. And Seaside Council Chairs will come to order. Thank you. A roll call, please.
Council and Agency Member Miller.
Here.
Council and Agency Member Burks.
Here.
Council and Agency Member Garcia Arizona.
Here.
Mayor Protim and Vice Chair Pacheco. Mayor and Chair Oglesby.
Here.
You do have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Next, we go to item number three, which is invocation and pledge of allegiance. I believe we have a... Okay, we will have a moment of silence. And then I would ask Council Member Burks to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, if she would, please.
Thank you so much. We are the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our law.
Next, we're going to add the number four, which is review an agenda. City managers, there any items that you would like to add to the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you so much. Item number five is public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the city council on matters underneath the jurisdiction of the City of Seaside may do so now. We're up to three minutes during public comment. It's also the time to make comments on presentation items. We ask that you hold your comments on items on agenda until that item is called. You also have three minutes then. It would be helpful for the public and the record if you would state your name. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Maria Tabib. I live in 1463 Plumas Avenue. I'm here because it is difficult to leave where I live right now. I got three kids. There's a lot of kids in my area. The kids want to play outside. They want to be in bikes. They want to play with bulls. They don't want to be inside their houses. And it is not safe for my kids, in my community's kids, to be on Plumas Avenue. As many of you know, there is also school right in the bottom in the corner. And sometimes the kids walk around for field trips around the area, etc. So cars pass extremely fast. So our house is specifically in a corner. As a mother and as a healthcare worker, for me, it's very difficult sometimes to go to work thinking that something might happen to my kids. And, you know, I see a lot of teens. It's hard. There's a lot of teenagers and people of all ages that goes right in front of my house, even though there is a bump, they do not stop. They're right straight looking at the phone and driving because I monitor the area. So it'll be very difficult for one of them to break out of nothing because a kid is coming out. It's been an ongoing issue. I have been to the police. They've been very helpful, very nice. And they sent patrol. I tried to talk to some neighbors. I have cones as well by my house and the cones being stolen. When we first moved over there, one of our windows was broken. We need rock. And I don't know what's going on specifically in that area, but it is very difficult to be there right now and have kids in that area playing outside. The cars just speed right through it. They speed right through it. And that's all. Thank you. We appreciate your help. Please. Do the cars go slow or fast by your house?
Fast.
How did you feel about it?
Bad.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ray Reardon. I'm part of the NIC commissions, but I'm here as a private citizen. Yeah, I guess the belly button doesn't box. On Wanda and Waring, you guys put on some great handicap ramps. Look good. Except there's one issue. The pole in the middle of the sidewalk, you can't get a wheelchair by. And then the telephone pole right there, you can't get the wheelchair or the little scooters coming down Wanda. And then the ramps over here. And now everybody's going to say, well, use the driveway that's right up there. But if you've ever rode in a wheelchair, I had to do that in high school. That's kind of a punishment. Getting over a little one and a half inch stump is a challenge. And so I don't know what you can do about it, but maybe buy that retaining wall that's back there and widen it up because it kind of doesn't look good for us as a city that puts those kind of things in. And then also I was going to ask, why is flooring and wearing getting all of the handicap ramps? Everybody's asking about that. Are they special up there or what's going on? Because we were told you weren't going to spend any money on sidewalks or anything. That wasn't part of the budget and all that. Because there's a lot of people that don't even have sidewalks, like this lady just spoke about. They don't have sidewalks properly and we're walking in the middle of the street. Where I live, I have sidewalks. But I think we need to start looking at sidewalks, please. The one on that Caltrans did, wow, game changer. They're even pulling up the poles and doing all sorts of stuff. But you're going to spend $875,000 buying a piece of property over on Broadway for who knows what. None of my business, but it is my business because it's our money. And that could do a lot of sidewalks. I'm not going to let this go. I'm the sidewalk guy. I am. You can't call this a city and not have sidewalks. You're going to have sidewalks out in front of the new power station? You darn right you will. And to say that we have to pay for our sidewalks when our homes were built and the contractors got away with not putting sidewalks in, then the city owns it, not the people. Okay? So let's make an effort. Let's help these people with no sidewalks. Because the rain's coming and everything else. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
Hi, my name is Rachel Christopherson and I've been to woefully very few city council meetings. But everyone that I've come to, I walk away leaving inspired. I walk away leaving inspired by this community and by the decorum in this chamber. So I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for running these council members, these council meetings so well, listening to everyone and taking everyone's view into account very respectfully. And just for your time in running the city. I don't know that people tell you thank you enough for your time and dedication to the city. And I just wanted to do that and also to acknowledge that I hope to be more like my hero Kalen, who attends many of these meetings and attends some more. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Wilk. I'm a candidate for mayor of Seaside. There's a couple of things I want to bring to your attention. When I came to sign up to run for mayor, I was told that there would be a time for me to meet with the city head, heads of city and that right after the paperwork and stuff was all filled out and everybody was accounted for, we would set up a meeting. I came last Friday before a Monday night form. And I was told that the meeting was never set up and that it was planned to be set up, but then Mr. Maylin came in and then I guess it didn't happen. So I don't know if, what Mr. Maylin had to do with it or what, but you might want to look into that. I've had a few city employees let me know that, you know, they received the email that they were not to kind of get involved or take sides in the election. So I'm not sure what that's about. And I do know that when I went to the forum that night, the three council members that were there were supporting each other quite well. So I just would like those policies looked into and find out why some of those things didn't happen. The last thing I'd like to say is, I don't know how far you are in picking a new city manager or even buying property, but I think we got about 25 days left till the election and I was kind of hoping and making sure that maybe we would hold off buying things or picking a new city manager until we find out if there will be a new council or not. I just think that would give us all kind of respect. Thank you.
Hi, Shonda Lopez. I'm candidate for Seaside City Council. I'd like to thank everybody who turned out for the candidate form on Monday. And as a show of good sportsmanship, I'd like to thank Alexis and Dennis and Mr. Pacheco and Carla for showing, even though we're opponents, we did wish each other well at the end of the form. So I was really proud and I was excited to see that we were still very, were very good at the end of the form. So I'd like to thank you guys for extending that courtesy to me. So thank you very much.
The caller ending in 9902, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Good evening. My name is Nina Beatty. This week I had the opportunity to visit the Doctors on Duty Clinic on Fremont and I was very impressed with it. But I was surprised to see that there are Tesla charging stations right next to it. This clinic is an important medical facility in Seaside. And as you may be aware from news reports, there are fire and explosion risks from charging electric vehicles and the lithium ion batteries themselves are explosive. The clinic, the way it's situated in the shopping center, has very cramped access through the parking lot. And so to get anything to the clinic or to get out of the clinic if there were an emergency situation with the battery charging station, it would be very, very difficult and could damage the clinic itself. Lithium batteries are also very toxic. They're very difficult to put out when they erupt in flames. And there might be a requirement for an extended shelter in place if there was an incident there. So I request that the city explore avenues to move the charging station away from any medical clinic, any medical facility. It's not the appropriate place for it, especially with the weird traffic access issues there, to put it on a place that's an empty lot or it's away from where there's people, especially vulnerable people and medical personnel. If Seaside wants to encourage having charging stations, they should not be in this particular location. It's not really acceptable or appropriate. Anyway, I just again want to appreciate Doctors on Duty Clinic. I think it's a really wonderful addition or component to Seaside's business community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank everyone for the opportunity to sit along candidates that are running and those that are in the seated positions now. I think everyone had amicable decorum and we gave the community an opportunity to see our characteristics in a different space. And now we're here back to business. And so talking about business transparency, my question with regards to July 4th, July 18th and July 25th city council meetings, when we talk about transparency, were these council meetings in July canceled due to the fact that our city attorney was not eligible to practice law in the month of July? And if so, why was she not able to practice law in the month of July? Any business that was conducted during that time is invalid if she did not have a practicing license. Second, when we talk about transparency, we are having a presentation about Seabreeze, but we don't know what that context of that is and it's not on the agenda. So there's no way that we can ask questions or even acknowledge something that may be addressed or not. So I do want to make a point to state that Seabreeze, same management company that is running it now and the way that it is running it and the inhabitable spaces that it's had for years will be the same management company that will be running SeaGrow, formerly known as Ascent. So that in itself is not being transparent. This is information that's always been out there, the fact that we didn't address it then. Perhaps this council would behoove them to see what you are going to assure the community that the same practices experienced at Seabreeze will not occur at SeaGrow. And I hope that that is included in this presentation and update that we're going to hear tonight. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. The caller ending in 8066, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you, city council members and mayor. Appreciate it. Longtime resident on Mescal for 54 years. And there's something I just noticed on the agenda, item 9A. I don't know if it's time to say or comment, but it's, there's $100,000 for adult fitness in Lincoln Cunningham Park. And then there's another suggestion for $75,000 for a play structure. And that just seems way too much. $175,000 where the city just went in a full length basketball court. So it just seems like that park is benefiting more funding than any other park in the city. And I just would like to know why there's so much focus on the park. And also $75,000 for a structure that should be replaced in ten years.
Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me. That's on the agenda. So that could be something that you could discuss when that item is called.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much, mayor. Appreciate it. I'll just call back again.
No problem. Thank you.
Peter Kaiser, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Yes, this is Peter Kaiser, longtime resident, Mr. Mayor, city council. I could give a short prayer. Lord, be with the city and be with all the voters. Help them to know and to do your will and to study the Bible. Follow the Constitution with the original intent. Help us to protect all the innocent preborn from the Planned Parenthood clinic and any of those operations that they do there. And also help them not to get any of these morning after pills, Ephapristone and so forth. And protect all these babies. Help all of the candidates who are considering running for the office to actually be willing to oppose the Planned Parenthood use in the city and losing all of these preborn babies. And Jesus' holy name, amen. There is a serious election coming up. I hope all the voters are going to do their homework to vet the character and the worldviews of the candidates and help them to understand and vote for the most pro-family, pro-life, pro-traditional marriage candidates between that marriage is between a man and a woman and that they would also consider pleased to vote against Proposition 3, which plans to take Proposition 8 out of the state constitution, which is marriage between a man and a woman, and be with the Supreme Court as they, Justice Thomas said they are considering. and be with the Supreme Court as they, Justice Thomas said they are considering removing the Burgerfeld nineteen, twenty nineteen decision and protect traditional marriage between a man and a woman in all the states throughout the United States. And help people consider maintaining and supporting the safe and sane fireworks in this city to vote no on Measure CC. The, there's almost three hundred thousand dollars to go to nonprofits and churches for youth groups and camps where they learn the gospel and become Christians. And also please consider voting no on extending the mayor's term to four years. We need accreditation and we need careful every two years we need to elect a mayor. So please, everybody be registered to vote and carefully consider all these things. And we're looking for good new leadership in 2025. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, at this time, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Thank you so much. I would ask the city manager and city attorney, are there any questions, issues or concerns they can speak to at this time?
I think so, mayor. And again, I'll generally work backwards. And I'll start with, again, the Lincoln Cunningham Park, that's on agenda item nine A. The matter of the management company for Seabreeze and Sea Grove Apartments, that is not something that the city is consulted on or has power to control. I'm sure the city attorney will address the licensure issue when I'm done. The charging stations are are throughout the region and nation. And on private property, they have to meet the current electrical codes. That's what governs where charging stations can go. Regarding a meeting of candidates, I know I did not stop any meeting from occurring if there was a meeting that was being planned. And we can still have one. I absolutely didn't stop it. Regarding buying things in the city manager recruitment schedule, I'll say two things. One, this is the duly elected city council. They are fully empowered and it's fully appropriate for them to decide what what land acquisition is in the city's best interest while they serve. The question about the next council essentially picking the next city manager is what is, what will happen as we follow the schedule. The current schedule has the city council that is sitting in January ninth and 10th to interview the next interview candidates for the next city manager. So that I think is well covered. The comments about the poles, sometimes sticking out of sidewalks next to ADA ramps, it's something that has always looked odd. What often is happening there is the the ramps are being done as part of a street repair program and not necessarily sidewalk repair program. But we'll go take a look, our engineers will go take a look at those and see if we can do anything to make sure that that people in wheelchairs can pass. And the question about it wasn't really framed as a question, but the question about, you know, there's eight hundred and seventy five thousand dollar purchase on tonight's agenda for a personal land on Broadway. And whether, you know, we could use that eight hundred and seventy five thousand dollars to fix sidewalks. The answer is we can't because that eight hundred and seventy five thousand dollars comes out of affordable housing funds. So we can't use affordable housing funds to go fix sidewalks. Just can't do that. That wouldn't be proper. And that, and then I got to see my old friend, Mr. Haney, and talk about Plumas, traffic calming. I know when I was here previously, I actually went out and did a speed study. And we'll go do another speed study and see if there's a problem that we can fix. I think that covers everything on my list.
Yeah, I want you to speak to, someone indicated somehow certain areas were getting those ramps as though we were picking those areas. So could you explain that that's more in relationship to the streets being done?
Yeah, exactly, mayor. And again, the ramps are typically done in prior to the streets being repaired. Typically, because you want to do the ramps before the street gets repaired. Because if you do the street and then you do the ramps, it's it's a lot of extra money. So the streets, the street repairs are done pursuant to a priority ranking that engineering, you know, will there's a lot of work involved. We try to figure out what what pavement condition index, what sort of how good the street is, how many people travel on that street? What is the appropriate intervention for that street? Is it, you know, full depth repair? Is it, you know, slurry seal? So there's a lot of engineering that goes into figuring out what's the best bang for the buck in terms of repairing streets. And then as we figure out what the schedule of street repairs is for a current year, we try to make sure that the ramps are done in advance. So that's how that works.
Yes.
Here in every city in America.
Thank you through the mayor. Thank you for the question regarding my licensure in the month of July. I had in my private law office, I carry an attorney trust account and through an administrative oversight, I did not pay a fee. And so I was ineligible to practice law from July 2nd through July 19th. That had no bearing whatsoever on my work in the city attorney's role because I wasn't required to practice law. I do other things besides just practice law in my city attorney role, some of which is advisory. It's not appearing in a law capacity. And the meetings in the month of July were not canceled through any reason of that licensure or not licensure. They were canceled because of a lack of quorum by the city council. It had nothing to do with the oversight in paying the fee to address the attorney trust account issue.
My understanding, they said they asked July 4th, 2024? Why we didn't have a meeting on that night?
That was also, yes, so there were two meetings. One was on July 4th. That was an automatic cancellation because it's a holiday. And then the second meeting in July, which would have been on July 17th, I think, or the 18th, was canceled due to a lack of quorum.
Okay, no, just, I just want to point that out. I mean, everybody should understand why we didn't meet on July 4th. And so when people throw those things out there, I won't go into that, but clearly you have authority to to prac, not even practice, because it's not practicing law, what you're doing right now in a sense, right? I just want to be clear about it, you know? That was not the issue. That is not issue. I mean, people can say it, but that's not, that was not an issue. To
Correct.
Okay, that's all, yeah. I would just say, I think for the Plumas, the Plumas thing, we've been, we've been, you know, that's been a while and we the local community tried some speed bumps and I know a couple of people over there, they even bought some speed bumps and and things of that nature. And we talked a couple of years ago about how to channel that street to slow down. I think it's something that maybe the tech needs to look at. I mean, we really need to get a handle on Plumas as we took a look at a couple of other streets. And then it was, I don't want just to pass through because it's pretty, pretty clear. Someone made a comment about employees received a letter that they should not engage in any political activity. Anybody want to speak to that letter or that communicate to employees because somebody's? Can anyone speak to that? I want, the election official should be able to speak to why someone working for the city was probably told to, in their official capacity.
Dominique Davis, city clerk, elections official for the city of Seaside. Oh, sorry. In regards to communications that were sent to employees were in regards to general election announcements as it relates to hours as employees, as it relates to the election. Letting them know, you know, when the candidacy dates opened. And the purpose of the email was to share with employees that if there is information that they've provided to a candidate to share that with the city clerk's office so that it can be shared for all candidates. There was reminders about registering to vote and how they can gather information about the election on the city's website. And that was the purpose of the communications, but there was not any direction to not provide information or to not support candidate employees have that right as private citizens to support who they like.
Confirmed something. I remember when I was working, city employees were not allowed to campaign during working hours.
That is correct.
And that's, I think that was the point. They can talk to whoever they, as business related, but not campaigning for anybody, be it incumbent or somebody.
Correct.
I just wanted to confirm that as part of the overall question. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we go to item number six, which is public agency communication. Do we have any public agency communications? Yes.
I'm Sharge. Good afternoon, Mayor Olusbe and city council members. My name is Carol Chorbadian. And I am the Monterey Peninsula Airport District Division One Board Member. I'm here again today to give you some more exciting news from the airport. We were very proud to see the Thunderbirds here this year to perform for the airshow. Sadly, Saturday, and I was out in Salinas, people couldn't understand why they couldn't fly as we saw clouds soaring down the valley. I'm like, they need absolutely full visibility in order to fly. It's not like regular planes. But we did find out, and I don't know if you've heard, that next year, the Blue Angels will be here for the airshow, October 4th, 4th and 5th. The noise may not be a situation because the Blue Angels fly F-16s, which can get in and out of Salinas Airport. The Thunderbirds had to fly in and out of Monterey Airport. So we may not have the situation with the noise next year if it bothers people. I know the only thing I got to see, I was at the Jazz Festival Sunday afternoon and I got to see them take off. I'm like, okay, that was my Thunderbirds. Next, as you may or may not know, 2025, we will celebrate the 40th anniversary of AT&amp;T sponsoring the Pro-Am. I've been, and the dates are January 27th through February 5th. I've been currently working now for about a month and a half with the airport staff to they call them extra sections, to get flights, additional flights during the week of the Pro-Am where we have a higher volume. We lost the February, September 5th, we lost the second Dallas flight. And it's gone for the winter. It'll be back sometime in the spring, but not in February, definitely. And there are, there's a, over the holidays, they've got some military moves where they've been successful with the airlines in adding some additional flights. So I'm again working now with staff to try and get the week of the Pro-Am to get that one additional, that Dallas flight back in so that we have it. We noticed last year, and I've looked through a bunch of customers that had come in. We ended up having to have them go to San Jose and San Francisco, which wasn't their preference. They would prefer to come in. And it's not just from Dallas. They come from across the country. So that second flight will really help us that week if we can get it back. And they said, we're in the timeframe right now where we're working hard on it. American is a large customer of AT&amp;Ts. Their CEO has played in the Pro-Am as one of their guests. And so we've sent a letter, AT&amp;T has sent a letter to American as well. Next, well, and you know this, I know everybody's heard from the news, great news yesterday that Woody's at the airport was named number one sit-down restaurant, airport restaurant again for the second year. We're very pleased about it. And I love Tim because Tim is like, this is not just for me, this is for the entire community. This makes us all look good. It's like, because if you see the top 10, they're like Houston, New York, all kinds of, you know, huge airports. And here we are, number one. On the personnel front, you've probably seen that Mike LaPierre announced last week that he will be retiring as of June 6th, 2025. We have already formed an ad hoc committee consisting of the incoming chair, Carl Miller, and Dino Pick to help us move forward with engaging an executive search firm immediately so that we can begin, the first of the year, we can begin the search, the hiring process. And our goal is to have someone in place when Mike retires. On the labor side, I saw, yeah, last month we signed two additional contracts with Labor Consultants of California. They are a prevailing wage and labor specialist that does the all-important labor compliance monitoring that we need, ensuring that we are in compliance, considering the amount of federal dollars we have is very strict. And this is for some of the projects that are now the apron project, the parking lot project. And as we go through a month after month, we will be signing further contracts. This is ensuring with the monies that we're getting that we are absolutely in compliance from a labor standpoint at all times. We are always, our committee meetings, you can see are regularly scheduled, available for the public. We invite the public. People, we want to know. And the only way we can help is when we can, we know from the public what their interests, what their complaints are. So we invite everybody to come to our board, to our committee meetings. And under public comment or the board meetings every month, we love public comment because then we get to know what people are thinking. Thank you again for having me here this month and I look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you.
Any more comments on the publication communications? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Alvin Edwards, Director, Monterey Peninsula Water Management District Division One. Just a couple of updates. This month at our Monday meeting, I think it's October 21st, we will be discussing water allocation and be given a presentation on it. We also will be given the date and time that we hope to come down to the city councils and tell the public about the water allocation effort that we have. Today we had a committee meeting at a water demand and we was talking about outstanding water permits. We're going to have a program on that, something going to come out on that. And you must be aware of it because we're going back looking for people that didn't come to the district or the district did not come out and inspect their properties, but these outstanding water permits. So that is going to be coming up. Just on the final, I didn't jump up here doing all communication, but I want to tell everybody you need to vote. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and Sustainable Seaside for having their meeting down at the Odomir Center. One thing that I learned from that, people care about water. They care about getting things built. So stay tuned. You need to vote. You need to do your homework. If you like the way the city is going, vote. If you don't like the way the city is going, vote. If I don't care, elections have consequences. Remember that. So y'all need to vote and we need to do it and show our young people how to start voting. Thank you, mayor. Or any question from the council?
Okay, thank you. There's no more publication communication. We'll go to item number six, A, Seabreeze Apartment Infestation Update. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, mayor. The city attorney is going to take this topic.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, mayor, members of the council, members of the public. I was asked to provide an update on an ongoing investigation that is occurring at the Seabreeze Apartments regarding a bug infestation. Our code enforcement team takes these complaints very, very seriously. We've received over 45 complaints out of 121 apartments that are located at that complex. The city, very shortly after receiving those complaints, brought in extra help to do after-hours inspections. And as of today, 38 to do after-hours inspections, and as of today, thirty-eight of those apartments have been inspected. Um, the city has sent letters to enforce the obligations of the property owners as to infestations and has received some information back. Those units are now being treated for infestation. We are still working with, and the investig-, the um, enforcement action is still ongoing, working with the property owner um, and the property managers to um, complete a property-wide extermination plan to address all of the buildings out there. The city has taken extra steps to try to in, ensure that our community members, and in particular, the tenants of that complex are informed. And on September nineteenth, the city sent two members of our code enforcement team to a community meeting on that. Um, in addition, I personally have attended a community meeting to listen to the complaints um, along with Councilmember Garcia Arizona and Councilmember Burks on the issues at that complex. The city continues, um, is in the process, I'm in the process of retaining an extermination expert to assist in the evaluation of any extermination plan that is submitted by the property owners to ensure the highest level of compliance with the city's ordinances to address the infestations at that, at the, that apartment complex. And that's what I can report right now, and I'm available for questions.
All right, any questions? Uh, Councilmember Garcia Arizona?
Thank you for that report, um, Madam City Attorney. I'm a, are, are we ensuring that the communication that we're pushing out to residents is both English and Spanish? Streamlining that as soon as possible?
Yes. So our code enforcement team does have a Spanish speaker, and the extra help that we brought in was Spanish-speaking to ensure that those communications are going out in both English and Spanish. Um, additionally, I've been communicating with the property owner, the property tenants um, representatives who are English speakers. So there is information going out that way as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, when, when can we expect another update?
I would, I would consider another update in a month. We're continuing to get information, ongoing reports of how the treatments are going. There are some ongoing tenant um, issues with respect to being ready for the treatments that are being um, provided, but we are working through those issues. So.
Thank you so much. Uh, want to thank the city leadership for hearing the concerns of the residents and, and jumping right on this. Uh, as you can imagine, it's kind of hard to do that private entities, the city has to jump in certain ways and respond certain ways so we can make sure we can hold them accountable uh, going forward. Uh, item six B, uh, Seaside News Broadcast Upcoming Citywide Events and Community Announcements.
Let's dip into this week's edition of Seaside City News, covering events happening this October. As we mark Seaside's seventieth birthday in October, we want to honor the incredible residents who have helped shape our vibrant community by gathering stories and memories for a special tribute feature. If you or someone you know has lived in Seaside for fifty years or more, we'd love to hear from you. Visit bit.ly forward slash seaside fifty years for more information. It wouldn't feel right to have such a significant birthday without a party. On Sunday, October thirteenth, from four to eight P M., the City of Seaside presents a celebration of seventy years at City Hall. There will be music, cake, and more surprises. Sky Elements, who took third place on America's Got Talent, will be putting on a stunning drone show to close out the night. So mark your calendars, and we'll see you then. The Friends of Seaside Parks Association is having several workdays all over the city this October. For more information, including upcoming dates and locations, visit friendsofseasideparks.org. Regen Monterey is excited to announce a grant funding opportunity for the S B thirteen eighty-three Edible Food Recovery Program. These grants are intended to expand and enhance edible food recovery programs at food rescue organizations and services throughout the county. Organizations, businesses, or public entities that collect, generate, and distribute food to those in need can learn more about this exciting program on the bulletin board at regenmonterre.org. This Friday, October fifth, at six P M., Movies in the Park is back. Head down to Laguna Grande Park for the return of this fantastic family event. The voting period is over, and the winner is Inside Out Two. So pack up a blanket and some snacks, grab the family, and come on down for a fun night out in the park. The November fifth presidential general election is here, and there are a couple of things voters should know to get their vote ready. Monterey County Local Voter Information Guides, as well as State Voter Information Guides, are now in the mail and will continue to mail into next week. Ballots will begin mailing October third. All active voters will receive a ballot in the mail, and in-person voting options will be available. For more information, call eight three one seven nine six one four nine nine, or visit countyofmonterre.gov forward slash elections. October twentieth marks the start of the two thousand twenty-four Coed Adult Slow Pitch Softball League at Catino Park. Games are every Sunday beginning at six P M. from October twentieth through December twenty-second. The team fee is five hundred dollars. To register, visit bit.ly forward slash seaside rec track. On Monday, October seventh, from eleven A M. to three P M., the Seaside Youth Resource Center in the City of Seaside presented its Boots on the Ground Community Service Award Ceremony. The City of Seaside will be honoring organizations and individuals who have made a difference in youth violence prevention for the peace and safety of our community. The keynote speaker for this event is Mel Mason, with Mayor Ian Oglesby sharing a message as well. There's a complimentary lunch and live music, so be sure to head down to Old Meyer Center to celebrate these local life changers. On Thursday, October tenth, Special Olympics Northern California sponsors this year's Tip a Cop event. From five to nine P M. at the Chili's on Canyon Del Ray, local law enforcement personnel will be working alongside Chili's staff to serve customers and collect tips as donations for the Special Olympics. All tips help create inclusive communities where people with and without intellectual disabilities can make connections, develop healthy lifestyles, achieve success, and experience the joy of sports. Check, please. Registration for the two thousand twenty-four Walter Lee Avery Gallery Fall Art Competition has begun. You have until Monday, October fourteenth, to submit in one of three categories: two-dimensional, three-dimensional, and photography and digital. For more information, including how to register, visit bit.ly forward slash fallartcomp twenty twenty-four. Construction notice. Monterey Peninsula Engineering began the construction of the Lincoln Cunningham Park Phase One Arterial Trail Project for the City of Seaside on October first. The project includes the construction of a concrete multi-use path through Lincoln Cunningham Park from San Pablo Avenue to Lincoln Street, pedestrian paths from the new multi-use paths to Yerba Buena Court, Lindbergh Court, and Sarapee Court, storm drainage improvements, curb ramp retrofits, one on-street accessible parking stall, and seating for erosion control. The project is expected to be completed in early two thousand twenty-five. On Saturday, October fifth, from ten A M. to two P M., the Seaside Fire Department invites you to this year's annual open house to kick off National Fire Prevention Week. There will be community resource tables, live demonstrations by firefighters, activities for the whole family, and a free barbecue. The dedication and unselfishness of Seaside Fire is exemplary, and the love and appreciation they show to our community stretches far beyond our moments of peril. This event highlights the true spirit of Seaside Fire, a focus on safety, an unwavering sense of loyalty, and unmatched resolution. So bring your whole family, meet some of Seaside's true heroes, and take a photo with Sparky. We'll see you at the firehouse. On Saturday, October nineteenth, from eleven A M. to two, head out to the Harvest Festival at Pachetti Dog Park. This community event includes vendors, raffles, food, and a dog costume contest at one. The contest fee is five dollars, so dress up your pup, bring your appetite, and celebrate another fantastic fall in the City of Seaside.
Wow, that's a lot of stuff going on in Seaside. Uh, uh, but I, I didn't hear about the medians. Was that medians in there? I didn't hear about the medians. But, but I know the, the Mayor Potem has some comments and so, or questions.
Just a quick comment. Uh, since you're celebrating positive news, um, the uh, the city was recognized by the Monterey County Weekly, I believe for the first time, best blues venue in the county. And also, congratulations to Dam U.S. for that work. And I believe, uh, Day to Blue was recognized as the best jazz venue on, in the county. So to me, that means Seaside is a strong music venue, and I think we should all appreciate that since we're sharing positive programs and, and things for the community.
Yeah, so many wonderful things going on in Seaside. We forget them all. Uh, but we should put our hat off to, uh, what we do in the, uh, Recreation Department for years, you know? It takes time to establish yourself to finally win that recognition, and that comes from consistency and, and, and hard work. And, and I know, uh, a good oversight from the Mayor Potem for, for the years as it relates to, uh, losing the park. And then, you know, one of our local own, uh, Deja Blue, uh, a former, uh, City Councilmember, uh, Daryl Chote, uh, is running that down there, and he's making it a place to be. Uh, so congratulations to him for being recognized for his hard work and investing in the City of Seaside and our downtown. Uh, we're going to keep that going. Uh, my understanding is, um, I don't know if I've misspoke, but the, the city clerk, you said you had a hands up. I don't remember, uh, uh, having public comment for presentations. What I said was, you could comment on presentations during public comment. Right? So, but, but I will, I will take this one because maybe I, I went. I'm not going to say too fast because I'm, I want to keep my same pace when I say next week, but, uh, you know, I said, go ahead. I, I'll take this one just for what a good, good at will, good at order.
Laura Vargas, you can now make your public comment.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you so much. I, I actually had my hand up back a few topics ago, I would, regarding the, uh, Seabreeze Apartments um, in Seaside. Uh, I just wanted to say thank you so much to, uh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I just want to be clear for everyone. Uh, there's no public comment during presentation items.
Okay, got it. Okay.
But I, I'll let you say what you want to say because you, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to say thank you so much to Mr. Soto for his help and, um, all of this. We have, and, and to one of the speaker's points, we've had an ongoing issue with translating issue, you know, our, our plans to treat and our hopes to get into units, and it has been a, a battle. And with his help, I feel like our enforcement is, we're finally getting somewhere, um, with, with residents um, to a place where we can, or we're confident we're going to get a permanent and quick solution for the issues. Um, so I just, I just wanted to say thank you. Um, I appreciate your attention on this, and it's really been amazingly helpful.
Thank you for your comments.
Uh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we will go to item number seven, uh, B, uh, I mean, seven A, uh, presentations. Okay. Who's, who's coming down? Whoa.
He can come down.
Okay, okay, so. Well, yeah, we'll, we'll face it. But, but I just want to establish that you guys are representing.
Grandma.
Grandma, which is wonderful. Okay. Uh, this is going to be a proclamation. City of Seaside Proclamation honoring, uh, Mary Tula. Uh, as she is affectionately known, has been a cherished resident of the City of Seaside for over forty-seven years, having made significant contributions to the cultural and spiritual, uh, fabric of our community. And whereas Mary was born in July ninth, nineteen forty-four in the Kingdom of Tonga, and after her migration to the United States, she settled in Seaside, where her dedication to family and community service has become an enduring legacy. And whereas over the course of her life, Mary has been a pillar of strength and a guiding force in her family, raising ten children and supporting her grandchildren, some that you see here tonight, including those who have served the Seaside community with distinction and pride. And whereas Mary could, contributions to Seaside include the founding of both the Tongan congregations of Hilltop United Methodist Church in Seaside and the Free Whaling Church of Tonga in Monterey, fostering a sense of unity, faith, and belonging within the Tongan and larger Seaside communities. And whereas her wayward commitment to her family and her community alongside her spirit of resilience and grace serves as an inspiration to all generations. And her migration story continues to empower her grandchildren and others in Seaside to engage with and serve our community. And whereas the City of Seaside recognized that Mary's lifelong dedication to her family, her faith, and her community is deserving of the highest honor bestowed by the city. Now therefore, be proclaimed that I, the Honorable Ian Oglesby, Mayor of the City of Seaside, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby award Mary Tula with the key to the City of Seaside in recognition of her decades of service on the way we support for her family and her role in strengthening the bonds of our diverse and vibrant community. Uh, signed this day, October third, Ian Oglesby, Mayor of the City of Seaside.
I guess give one to you.
Oh, wait, get away. Oh, oh, he's good.
There we go. There, it's wonderful.
You got the key, Chris?
Yeah, no, I'm gonna give it to him in a second.
Got it?
And roses are my favorite. Thank you. I, I, I want to say that, um, for time immemorial, uh, from kings and potentates and local administrators. Now, I'm not accusing myself of being a king or potentate, right? But I'm telling the story. In the past, keys to the kingdom were given to loyal and deserving citizens for the trust that the king had in them and the commitment that they had in the community. They were given the key to the gate when the gate was shut at night and closed. But they trusted those citizens so much that they gave them a key to the city so they can come and go as they please. We present this key to Mary as a symbol of our support and uh, reverence for her lifelong work to open the doors for so many people in our community during her forty-seven years here in Seaside, and her work of raising her ten kids and grandkids. And we can only imagine the positive influence she had on them to build this community and make sure that the Tonga community is integrated with the rest of Seaside. This is a symbol of our devotion and appreciation for your grandmother, Mary, and this is the key to the city so she can come and go as she pleases.
Do you want anything for her? Do you want me to do it? No, okay. Can you hold this one? So I don't think. Hold this right behind. You got it? Careful, careful. I guess, can I? Test, test, you want to? Can I, can I just this one? Yeah, no, it's okay. Um, a warm Malalalei, Talofalava, Blavinaka, aloha, and greetings to you all. As most of you know, my name is Kalen Folliaki, and I am here today not only to attend, of course, City Council as usual, um, but to also accept this honorary award on behalf, oh, sorry, of my maternal grandmother, Melati Luipe, Mary Tula, Tuamelo. on behalf, oh, sorry, of my maternal grandmother, Melleti Luipe, Mary Tula, Tuameloah Leha, who at the young age of eighty is not able to be here, but she's watching on Zoom right now in the living room. So hi, grandma. Everyone says hi, grandma. Um first, I'd like to give thanks to God for this opportunity and this beautiful day and for all you beautiful people here. Um secondly, I'd like to acknowledge, I know I've seen him here, um Pastor Lusk and any other pastors or clergy with um here in chambers and online. Um I know Father Diaz, you're on there as well. Hi, Father, um on Zoom. Um and uh last but not least, to thank the honorable mayor and council for this honor. Um grandma and my family um are humbled to receive the keys to the city today. Um and uh as many of you know, um in the islands, in the Polynesian islands of, whether it's the Kingdom of Tonga, Samoa, Fiji, or Hawaii, um we love to give lays and the biggest um thing about us is our appreciation and gratitude. And so actually grandma and mommy that lay today. Um they made that this morning um over morning coffee and um uh so that was a gift to the city. Um she knew she was trying to see if she would make it, but um she's on Zoom, so hi grandma. Um and uh I think that's about it and um thank you so much.
We'll help you down.
Thank you so much. We will uh continue the agenda uh on item seven B, received presentation from the Village Project Inc. For update on their summer youth intern program, uh Mr. City Manager.
We have a representative from the Village Project here to help with the presentation.
Hi, good evening, city council, Mayor Oglesby, Mayor Protam Pacheco, and city council. Um first, we want to thank you all again for your immense support for our youth. Um this is our third year going into a summer youth work internship program. Um I myself have seen a lot of growth in our students. This year, we really focused with our older youth as opposed to working with some of our younger youth. Um and I saw a lot of pride in that with our students. Um I think next year, we're looking at kind of having them go out to other entities to see um what working with other community leaders are like, as well as working within our own agency. So we had students located at our ranch, well, not our ranch, but we have versus at a ranch in Carmel Valley. Um we had some of the youth working as youth leaders at our after-school program, as well as uh one young lady working in our office to kind of see what the day-to-day is like um working at a nonprofit agency. So I will introduce Jake Osborne. He is our Elevate Youth Program Manager and he works with our transitional age youth uh through our youth leadership program and he really oversaw the program this year.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. It's good to see you all again. So first and foremost, I really want to say, you know, thank you for funding our summer youth program, because I've seen a lot of growth and development with our youth when in terms of accountability. And even, you know, them showing up on time, you know, filling out their time seats and things like that the correct way. But we always say, you know, the youth are our future. And you are all, you know, really leading examples by that, by, you know, investing in our youth's future. So by, you know, by funding uh their summer work program. So I really want to say, you know, thank you for that. And the youth, we have a few here today and they just have a few words that they'd like to, you know, express gratitude and say thank you as well.
My name is Shemis Womack. Um this is my first city council meeting, uh city council meeting. But um I've been participating in the Village Projects Elevate Youth Program for two years now. I started the summer of twenty twenty-three and I do think that I was less mature than I than I am now. Um I feel like I've grown um from last year. I feel like I have, I try, I was having more fun last year than I was this year. Um this year was more of just, um I worked in the office, so I was learning just. I was having my first worst work experience. I was learning how to um. I was learning how to um just um navigate around the office and everything. Yeah, I was um pretty scared, but I got used to it and Stacy helped me along with Jake and a couple of other people at the office.
Uh I'd just like to say, um hi to the mayor, hi to the council members. Uh my name is Dedome. I've been in the program for like three years now. And I'd just like to thank you guys for funding it, cuz uh in the past summer, I've been working like at a horse ranch. You've been taking care of horses, you've been feeding them and bathing them and cleaning them. And it's a good learning experience. I also got to go down to our main site and help, help the kids like with reading and things of that sort. So it's just nice to be like role models to the kids and learn like new working experiences and things of that sort.
Um hi, my name is Zachary Alexander. Uh I've been with the Village Project for about eight years now. And I would like to thank you for funding my summer program. You funding my program helped me with a lot of job experience and that helped me expand on different jobs. You helped me be a role model to the children and make sure they're okay. And uh thank you, city council and Mr. Mayor for your help.
Um I wasn't sure if you had any other questions, but I did want to say we also have Deidre here and she was one of our visionary leader speakers um today at our luncheon. And I just want to congratulate her. Um she will be going into one of our summer work programs in the near future once she comes to that age and we're just so excited to have her. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Yeah, of course, council member Miller.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh it's an honor to have you guys back here and thank you so much. Public speaking is not an easy task, so at a young age, your students have done a very well job today. I do want to make one comment, the sweatshirt uh that the young lady's wearing that says Seaside on it. What a cool sweatshirt. And I'm extra large. If there's any way we could get one of those, that would be, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure, just extra large. No, I meant that in a good way, you know? But I appreciate.
Okay, I'll take you.
But you know, you know. All right, go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation and I I I just want to have a comment for both of you uh. In these jobs, and I know public speaking is is a little difficult, like my counterpart here mentioned. Um but I'm assuming they're totally different when they're on the field doing this job. Do you see a sense of pride, of confidence in them? What what have you seen grow over the past few months that they've been doing that?
I see so so much pride, so much confidence in them. Um we, you know, Jake does work with them on public speaking and I've seen them do really well with that. Some have more experience than others. Um myself, I'm, you know, also an adult and I get nervous with public speaking. Um but I I've seen their confidence in themselves, like their self-esteem. Um this young lady came with us to a Sacramento convention because we are going to be kicking off a uh mental health education campaign in January and she was the only youth in attendance there. And she went and spoke to all the different organizations throughout the state of California that were in attendance um and got to meet the different leaders there. So I've definitely seen confidence in herself in that and be able to engage with individuals um that are new to her, that are maybe in bigger positions. She met the um deputy director of the Office of Health Equity and had a great conversation with her um with Deidro. I've definitely seen him come out of maybe being quieter sometimes and I've definitely seen that confidence in him in being able to work with youth, direct them um to go to where they're supposed to go. If a child, a younger child might be, you know, acting out in a way, he's able to come and talk to them. Um Zachariah, I've seen so much growth in him. Um you know, he's kind of our original Seaside cowboy um here. And just the confidence in his ability to show people around the ranch, uh work with them with the horses, um just his knowledge of equine, um his ability as well to also work with our younger students and kind of say, hey, you know, I acted like this maybe when I was younger, but now you see me, you know, kind of as a role model and I'm going to um continue doing so. They were also the older kids at our table today at our luncheon and so they're also able to kind of be role models for some of the younger students today. So I'm just, I'm so proud of them. Um their grades are improving mental health-wise. Um they engage in conversations on mental health, uh they take initiative. They invite other students to take initiative and help um help out at our site um and just with my agency. So they're always looking for an opportunity to help out.
Sounds amazing and thank you for the great work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Helping prepare the 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 next generation of our leaders, as you mentioned. And I just want to let them know that you being here before the podium, it's super important. You have way more courage than I would have at your age. I don't think I would have been in front of a council. I I didn't even feel comfortable doing public speaking until I was in college. So for you all to be here with the crowd and be on live as well, it it really shows the determination you have, but also the love you have for the Village Project, which does amazing work in our communities. And um I hope you continue to uh nurture the next generation behind you uh and teach them the things that you've learned and help fight for more opportunities. And always ask questions, because these are prime opportunities that'll help you out, prepare you for the future. So congratulations to you all.
Thank you. Are there any other uh questions? Uh thank you so much for the uh update of the program. It seems like it's working wonderfully. Uh we, you know, some of us seen this group of young people earlier today at the luncheon and I just want to highlight that the little young lady right there gave a wonderful uh reading of her um uh of her uh authorized uh poem. You know, she she authored a poem and maybe one day we'll be able to hear that uh here at this podium. So just keep practicing. You did a wonderful job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh next, we have item number eight, which is the consent agenda. Uh eight A, approved minutes from June twenty of two thousand twenty-four and September nineteen, two thousand twenty-four. Uh B, approve and file city checks. Uh C, approve and file success agency checks. D, accept and file the cash investment report for the city of Seaside and the success agency to the redevelopment agency of city of Seaside for the quarter ending June thirty of two thousand twenty-four. E, approve environmental service cooperative agreement, Esca report covering activities from July through September, two thousand twenty-four. Uh F, approve of mayor's U fund contribution request from International School of Monterey. G, approve of mayor's U fund contribution request from Seaside High School Robotics Club. H, approve of mayor's U fund contribution request from Seaside Middle School Soccer and Volleyball Programs. I approve of mayor's U fund contribution request from Seaside High Black Student Alliance for costs associated with their trip to several colleges, campuses, varieties of museums, and attended black business workshop and fair. J, approve a proclamation recognized October sixth through the twelfth, two thousand twenty-four as Fire Provincial Week. K, approve a proclamation recognized in the month of October as National Disability Awareness Month. L, approve a proclamation recognized in the month of October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. M, approve a resolution approving a professional service agreement with pavement engineers Inc. To prepare bid documents for the two thousand twenty-four hotspot pavement repair project for a mountain not to exceed fifty-two thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. And adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with US Digital Designs by Honeywell for the installation of a Phoenix G two fire station alerting system, including hardware and software for one hundred thirty-nine thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty-two cent and total project cost with a contingency amount not to exceed one hundred sixty thousand dollars. O, adopt a resolution approving amendment to the professional service agreement with Geotech Consultants Inc. For the supplemental soil sampling service for Campus Town Phase One A for a mountain not to exceed sixty-two thousand four hundred dollars to be paid from four demolition bonds. P, adopt a resolution approving access agreement for the courthouse project. Uh Q, adopt a resolution to accept and approve the taxing agreement for taxing entities compensation for the long-range property management plan from the success agency to redevelopment agency of the city of Seaside. R, adopt a resolution approving a lease purchase financing agreement with PNC Bank National Association to lease purchase a fire engine in the amount of one million thirty-two thousand seventy-two dollars and twenty-three cent. S, authorization to submit an application for state and local cybersecurity grant program. That concludes the read of the um consent agenda. Is there any item that somebody wants to pull off the consent agenda?
Item M.
Say that again, sir.
M.
M?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other item that somebody from on the dice would like to pull off? Is there any item on the agenda that someone in the public would like to pull off the consent agenda? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to pull something off the consent agenda? I hear no one. Uh all those items except M remains on the consent agenda. What is the will and pleasure of the council?
Move approval, second.
Has been properly moved by um council member Garcia Zola and seconded by council member Miller. Public comment is open on our consent agenda items.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carla Billups. I'm here on behalf of Seaside High's Black Student Alliance. I wanted to tell you about our upcoming Northern California College Campus Tours. This year, we had the opportunity to tour five California universities that have established centers to help and support the black students who attended these schools. We'll be visiting San Jose University, Cal State East Bay, UC Berkeley, UC Davis, and Sacramento State University. We'll also be attending the Black Power Museum in Oakland. The focus of this museum is to acknowledge the efforts of community activists that have helped and empowered and improved the lives of black people in California. We'll also be visiting the San Junior Truth African Heritage Museum in Sacramento. The focus of this museum is to open minds and change lives to the exploration of and celebration of African-American history, experiences, and culture through our education and outreach. Students will also get to participate in a black-owned business and organization workshop to learn more about black professionals on their education, career pathways, as well as opportunities. The culmination of this trip will be to be attend the Castway Classic, CSUC versus UC Popo game. Our goal with this trip is to provide students with the in-depth look at colleges that programs that support students who look like them, as well as provide educational bonding experience to encourage students to develop a deeper understanding of who they are, as well as their community amongst themselves. We're excited to have your support of the city of Seaside and looking forward to visiting these places, especially California's first ever black honors college. Thank you.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. May I know members of the public have come forward to make public comment on the consent agenda?
Uh thank you so much. Um on the question, I would just say, uh I thank the the young lady for coming down and speaking. Uh again, you know, it's very hard to come down there, but it was good that you came down here and shared your passion for what you're doing and what the city is talking about helping you do. It's always important that other community members hear uh that that support goes to people in this community and that they are appreciative of that support. So thank you for sharing that with us. Wonderful, wonderful words. Other question? No question. Are those in favor using the rubber sign voting, which is aye?
Aye.
No, it's have the same, right? Uh in extensions, uh no such as ayes have emotion carrying. Right? Right? Okay, you're looking at me like, I can't, I can't, you know, the city clerk is looking at you. You gotta stop in your in your pace. So the next item is item number M. Uh Mayor Protam, are there any questions or issues we can answer?
Yeah, just real simple. Um I think roads are so important to the residents. Can staff?
I think roads are so important to the residents. Can staff give an overview of which, which roads the contractors will be working on in the larger areas? And when that may get started? Actually, I think that's a real positive service that we provide our residents and, uh, anything, so they can be aware that we're moving forward.
The Honorable Mayor, City Council and Staff, I am Dan Mielis, the Recreation Director. And I have a brief presentation on the hotspot program. So just a little bit of background on this program is the street, uh, pavement rehabilitation funding policy provides twenty-five percent of the project year and operating budget surplus to be committed the following year to pavement rehabilitation. And fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, the project year end operating surplus was approximately eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, and a project was developed to repair the critical damage pavement areas, um, referred to as hotspots. Hotspots pavement repair, um, includes a mixture of treatments. Um, there can be four inch dig, four foot dig outs areas over thirty-six square feet. Um, it could be a thin maintenance overlay, um, or TMOs, which would be used as a stopgap measure before permanent repairs for entire roadway can be funded. So just to, you know, this is the community to go look, this is a previous hotspot repair. You can take a look at Amador Avenue. You can see variety of different, uh, potholes in that section. Um, this was after the hotspot repair that came in, did a dig out over, you know, the section that had a variety of different, um, uh, models. This is a thin maintenance overlay. Um, example, you can see the variety and the amount of, um, models here on, um, Wits Avenue before the parking lot to Olympia. And when we did a thin maintenance overlay, the entire street, it wasn't a full, um, full street repair, but this will be able to get us through until the street, um, is ready to be a full repair. Um, little bit of the scope of urban engineering, they, they want to prioritize treatment options based on the variable budget. Uh, better plans and specifications for selected areas for the various treatments and then providing bidding support. Um, so just on the cost of the big package is about fifty-two thousand, estimated construction costs, including contingencies, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand. And then, um, the estimated construction management, management is fifty-one thousand and change. So the total remaining in the budget is eight hundred and thirty. So we are recommending the adoption of, um, authorized city manager execute the professional service agreement. Um, in answer to your question, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, so the streets right now are being developed, um, with PEI, pavement engineering, um, management. What they're doing is they're looking at the, the index of our streets, looking at see which ones based from two thousand twenty-three. If there's a change on that in street index on whether or not, um, streets risen, rose even higher than what they were before. So we don't have the exact list yet. However, we do have lists from two thousand twenty-three that have been identified. We are looking at matching those ones with anything new that has come through. Um, typically when we were looking at street repairs, there's three options that we can do. We can do internal, um, repair, which we, we seen with our cold patch, um, truck. We also have the hot truck, pat truck. They can go out there and do bottles ourselves with city staff. Then we have the next level, which would be the hotspot program where we have a company come in. They'll do the big outs on more section, um, areas that are more larger in section. We can do the thin maintenance overlay, which is more of a temporary fix as well. And then the third repair is the full street repair. As one of the public speakers mentioned earlier, he's seen the work done on the streets with the curb cuts. And as the city manager stated, that is the starting phase when you're doing a full street repair and that wearing in Florida street is on that list. And that's what's happening. They're doing those curb cuts. We're going to see that street being fixed. So right now I don't have a time frame as we're still identifying the projects. But once we get those projects out, they will be included, or the streets will be included in the bridge, big package when it goes out to the public.
More questions. So the twenty twenty-three, those are the ones that we're going to try to do this fiscal year. Is that what I'm assuming?
Correct. Those were, we're coming back, um, with those funding.
And then just, I'm not sure about this, but in next year's budget, did we allocate excess funds from the budget to, to go to fifty percent? Is that a? I'm just going by memory here. I thought we increased it because of the lack of grants and stuff like that and losing, moving it by a grant. The state grant. I could be wrong. I'm just asking the question by, by memory.
I believe it's, we didn't raise it. It's still the twenty-five percent. It's been allocated.
Thank you. So, okay. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? Uh, Councilmember Garcia Zola?
What percent, what, what's our capacity for in-house repairment, repairs that we're doing within our staff?
So they go and they, they focus on see click fix. So whenever we get see click fix requests, they'll go out and do it as fast as they can. Um, and is, is often as possible. When it comes to, you know, it just depends on where the staff is with other projects. If they have openings, they'll go out there and take care of it. I know they're trying to do as much as they can right now before we get into the rainy season, because this is the prime opportunity for that.
And that was going to be my next question. Are we prioritizing streets in preparation for the winter storm that's coming along?
But they're definitely going to hit the streets that are on that pavement index. So that way we are, you know, ready for when that time comes.
So that would boost, I guess, qualifications for the streets to be, I mean, top choice, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, that's the whole object of the program is to focus on the dry months. Okay, just, and then for a while you said something about, we didn't know the streets, but then you named Warren and a couple of other streets. So we know some streets.
Those are that are currently in the, in the program now, yes.
Yeah, we know some, but you're talking about next year?
Uh, the next cycle that's going to be part of this, this package.
Right, okay. Just wanted for the public, we just need to be, we know what we're doing this year. We know we're doing this couple of months right here, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. All right, we'll open up to the public. Public comment is open.
Hey, William McGinn, thank you. Um, my question is, how do you get chosen your street to be put on it? I mean, um, I brought up floors and wearing, but how did they get chosen? They're not, I mean, we've been waiting on Hillby just to get some yellow lines down the middle so we ain't crashing into each other because there's no yellow lines. But back to what, I'm just curious of how do you get chosen? And so some people start coming here and asking for help because I don't think anybody knows how to do that, that they request. So that's all.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment on this item.
I thank you so much. Uh, public comment is closed. Uh, city manager, can you, can you speak to, you know, being chosen? I, I don't. Sure. Could you, you know, lay out the process best you can?
Sure. We, we use see click fix for small repairs. So if there's a small repair, uh, use that and, and our crews will get there as soon as possible. Uh, but, but seaside, like, like most every city in America uses, you know, has a pavement condition index, a PCI number, um, that, that describes, you know, the condition of the street. And what happens is the condition of the street and the amount of traffic on the street and the, the, um, the range of, of, of maintenance options are all considered in trying to, uh, get to the point where the PCI index, um, starts to improve. Um, and and the, and the streets that the majority of the community drives on have priority. So, so, so it's not so much of people coming down here and asking, you know, I live on this street and, you know, can you fix the street? There's a scientific process, uh, that, that goes on in order to get the best bang for the, for the community's buck in terms of improving the streets on a system wide scale. Those, the, the, those lists and those processes all happen before the city council. Uh, and the city council is aware of, uh, you know, where the PCI, where, where the payment condition, um, uh, trend is going, how much money is necessary to, um, make the streets better? And which streets? And, you know, this year and next year, are we heading toward to fix? It's, it's a very long and thought out process. Uh, it's not really based on, you know, coming down here and, and saying, I have a street that needs a little fixing.
Uh, Councilmember Garcia Zola?
Thank you for that explanation. Um, city manager, do we have an app for see click fix? This is for the community's sake. Do we have an application or where do they go? Where would the community go to put their road on see click fix? How do they access that?
Their road?
Sure.
Any type of issues going on?
Yes, so see click fix is a mobile app. You can do it, um, from your phone. You can do it from, um, a desktop computer as well. Um, there's a variety of different things that you can report on see click fix. Potholes is just one of them. So there's a dropdown menu that you go in, you can select pothole, and then it will pull up a GPS map where you can go actually input where that pothole is. If you want to take a photo of it and attach it to it, that is even better. So that way staff, when they see that photo, they can see exactly what you're talking about. So there's a variety of different, um, methods with it. It can be as detailed or as little detailed as you want.
So you can attach photos and you can, is there an other option on there where, let's say you click the dropdown button and your option's not there, right?
You can fill it in, like, you can, uh, there's definitely for other as well, yes.
It's an application and it's on the website.
Yes, you can report almost anything with see click fix.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I, I just had a, I guess a closing comment, not a question. Uh, what, what we try to do is definitely, uh, use science and the engineers to determine uh, what streets are best to go first because we don't want to be picking winners and losers. And just because you know, in this part of town, you don't get service because your voice is not that loud. Uh, the best way is to allow engineering science to determine, uh, which street gets done next with the money that we have. And, and I think it is times that, uh, uh, we do, uh, uh, pluck some streets out of there because it's just so important. Or they've been, um, you know, somehow they always get left out, right? So there's always room there, but it's, it's not a uh, you know, it's one of those things I, I agree that should be left up to the science and engineers. Any other, um, to be fair about it, any other comments before we?
Yeah, just real quick. Uh, my only goal was to share with the community that we are trying to move forward with streets, uh, improvements. Part of the process that we're working on wearing, we are spending two million dollars approximately this fiscal year to work on numerous streets. And I just think as often as we can to showcase with the community that we are concerned, concerned about streets and roads and to highlight trying to meet the needs of the rest, the residents. And, and that was the goal in pulling it. I, I totally agree that of the report. It's just that when we can highlight providing service to the community, I think it has value. Thank you.
Were you going to say something, man?
I, I was going to add one thing, mayor, and, and that is, uh, sometimes there are water or sewer projects that we know have to occur or are being planned in the future. And, and thus sometimes the, uh, the, the street work goes along with that because you don't want to, you don't want to fix a street and then two years later fix a sewer. Uh, so, so there's a lot of engineering analysis that, uh, happens, uh, prior to putting a program of work before the city council.
Yeah, and that goes to my point about, you know, it's not the council here picking which street is, is the best one to go to. That's the administrative part and that's the engineering part. And that's the fairest way to do it for a community, uh, because, um, staff at a certain point is the only one know that PJ need gave you two-year notice that you're going to dig up that, that street, right? The public doesn't know that necessarily. And I would just add, which is, I do think, um, you know, as we move forward, we'd need more of those before and after photos and, and particularly of this cycle, uh, this year as they start in earnest. There's a lot of work going on and, and the citizens need to see it. So Mayor Pro Tim made a good point, but sometimes we get into the work and we don't take the time to document the before and afters, but that's what people like to see. Um, um, and that's what we should do a better job of doing. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I agree with that, but I, I, I used to see a lot of social media posts that we used to do about see click fix, uh, showing to the community. So if you can just post that on our social media and uh, our newsletter as well, so constituents can be aware of the application that's available to them.
Okay, uh, any further questions? Um, what is the will of the council? Well, we went, yeah, okay, go ahead. I don't, did we already have somebody? We didn't have nobody. Put a motion? Okay.
Make a motion to approve item M.
Second.
Is it probably moved to second on the question? All those in favor use the red sign voting, which is aye.
Aye.
Now you have same right, listening for abstentions. Uh, here and done, motion carries. We'll move on to item number nine, which is business items. On nine A, review and approve the neighborhood improvement commission's annual work plan recommendations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four and twenty-five. Uh, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, staff has a, uh, presentation.
William McGinn, Mayor, Council, Dan Mielis, Recreation Director, and I'm here to give a presentation on the Neighborhood Improvement Commission's Annual Work Plan Recommendations. So just real quick about the commission, the commission isn't, the Neighborhood Improvement Commission is entrusted with and holds the duty of making recommendations to and advising the city council on matters pertaining to general improvement of the neighborhoods within the city. In a little background, in July of two thousand eighteen, the council adopted ordinance ten fifty-four, which directed fifty percent of the transient occupancy tax, TOT, generated by short-term rentals, uh, to be directed toward the community and park improvements with the Neighborhood Improvement Commission providing the recommendations for the use of the funds to the council for consideration and approval. And so for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, the allocated funding was three hundred and ninety-eight thousand six hundred and eighty-seven. So looking back at twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, some of the projects that the council approved and move, had moved forward with was a continual park mural, which was completed with a continual park picnic area. The Wheeler Street tennis courts, which I have a photo there. Um, so update those courts were re-surfaced, painted, and we did include adding four pickleball courts, um, in addition with that. Um, with annual tree giveaway program, um, four benches up on General Jim Moore, the walkway at Fernando Park. Um, we have some custom bike racks that are unordered, um, that should be here soon. We'll get those installed. And then we have the Olden Wire Mural, which is in progress, and then also the utility box project, which is in progress as well. So ever since, um, July, the Neighborhood Improvement Commission has held five public meetings to review, discuss, and solicit input for projects for their annual work plan. Started in July twentieth with a retreat. Uh, that was the first kickoff meeting and it was during that meeting, they came up with sixteen projects. August sixth, they had another meeting. Um, they met and viewed those sixteen projects, tried to finalize and, um, you know, identify if there's any, any movement there. September third, they came back and did it again. Um, September twelfth, um, city manager Malin came in and presented to the commission as well, provided some input from the city manager's office. Uh, made a recommendation that, um, um, we received some input from outside commissions and community groups. So at that point, uh, we sent a letter out to commission liaisons and to, um, the other commissions to solicit input via, um, a document that was sent to the city clerk's office on the twenty-fifth of September. And then on, um, September twenty-sixth, the commission again reviewed all those applications, those recommendations from other commissions and community groups. So when we look at proposed annual projects for this year's, um, Neighborhood Improvement Commission, um, they the neighborhood cleanup, so they want to do two a year. the neighborhood cleanup, so they want to do two a year at, for a total of $15,000, seven and a half each. Um, they want to continue with the tree, the annual tree way giveaway program, um, $10,000. The neighborhood watch program for 10,000 and graffiti abatement program for 25,000. And the chief of police, um, high five program for 5,000. So the total for their annual projects, um, was, is $65,000. So the logistics that came from the community and other commissions, um, came to, they wanted to see four new benches, additional benches on General Jim to make for a total of eight. Um, so that cost would be 7,588. They want to add more utility box wraps, um, additional bike racks, um, for parks in downtown. They, they want to fund an additional mural at Olden Meyer Center. For those of you, if you don't remember, we had two that came in for the, um, RFP classes that were really well liked. The one who will fund the second choice, so that we get two in there. Um, they also want to put $15,000 to redo the mural on the wall at the preschool. So that way it's visible for those preschoolers to see every single day. Um, they want to improve the landscaping at the gateway sign, you know, um, the, the opening slide had our gateway sign on, sat on the, um, the cover there. That was actually a Neighborhood Improvement Commission project, um, probably five or six years ago. So they, they want to improve the maintenance up there, something that's low, um, drought tolerant and easy to, um, stay clean. Want to have a community flag giveaway. So this program is where they want to have American flags that the community can come and pick up. So that way they can show their support, um, through the various holidays when we do raise an American flag, Veterans Day, Labor Day, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, and so on. And they want, well, those are a couple of different buckets that got put into Capitol Park. They started off with, um, $25,000 for the Capitol Park revitalization. They discussed more and they put in additional 26,000 and, um, 314 for Capitol Park for barbecue areas. So that way they can, you know, kind of add a little bit more. And then at the bottom, I, uh, three water fountains. One of those water fountains was also specifically identified for Capitol Park. Um, and then Parks and Rec Commission, they requested adult fitness equipment at, um, Lincoln Cunningham Park. And that was at $96,000. And then FosBra requested, um, playground equipment and Lincoln Cunningham as well. And the commission decided on 70,000. So we, I talked about the water fill stations. We have three on there. Two of them will be open to any park that has a current, um, water fountain that we can just upgrade it to a bottle filling station. And then the other one, like I said, was specifically, um, allocated to Capitol. So the total of the community and commission proposed projects is 320,316. So we look at the fiscal impact here, um, as I said in the beginning, the total allocated funding was 398,687. There was a software cost that is shared with STR program. 50% of it is paid for through, um, the NIC's allocation. So that cost that is coming out is 9,281. So that means the available funding that the commission had to, um, make recommendations on was 389,4570. So the, uh, the annual projects is 65. Proposed projects for, um, 2425 is 32016, a total of 38516. So that left a remaining balance of $4,089.70 that can be divvied up for the council's direction, how they would like to see. Um, so the recommendation is to receive and consider the neighborhood commission's, um, fiscal year 2425 annual work plan and provide direction to staff. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you so much for your, uh, report. All right, any questions or, uh, council member, uh, Miller?
Thank you very much. Dan, and, um, as I think the community knows, this was my prior commission, prior to being on the city council. And I always enjoyed my time and, um, we, uh, did good things for the community, such as this list. And I'm, I'm pleased, but one of the problems that I had as the chairman of the commission was defining what the neighborhood means. What does that mean in Seaside? Does it mean where we have the densest population or where we have ingress and egress to, uh, to the homes in our city? Um, and so it was a challenge for me and it was a challenge for me, understanding exactly what the city council wanted us to do for these funds. Because, uh, in my opinion, we were left with very little direction. And to see, uh, this commission come together with this list, um, uh, with the five meetings and with, uh, our, our acting city manager, interim city manager. Uh, I'm, I'm pleased at, at this and they were able to accomplish the goals, um, that they are. Uh, one of the things that I, I would stress on this commission is to have some kind of future procedure, a future procedure that in upcoming years, if the, uh, if the mission is still using, being used in this format, is what is the procedure going to be for following years? Are they going to include certain commissions? Are they going to include community input? What is the future for this commission? And I think that is, that's an important, uh, important part of that. And I, I am pleased to see this. I do have four questions and they're very, they're pretty relatively simple. Uh, one of the recommendations is the neighborhood cleanup and that happens a couple of times in the year. It's my understanding that the city has an agreement with green waste. And during, in that agreement, in one of the sections, um, they do provide some kind of, some kind of dumpster service for the city. So is that an additional 7,500? Cause that seems like, um,
I do believe so. I think that the plan was to do a quarterly.
To do it, cause now, now we do it twice a year.
We do it twice a year, yeah.
And when, when we started, when, when I was on it, we went from one dumpster to five dumpsters. Um, and the, the, so, so this new, this new plan is to do it quarterly.
I believe, I believe so. Um, that may be a question more for the, the commission liaison.
Okay, thank you, because, um, I know that green waste is, per our contract, has some kind of service for that. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. And if we could pull up the picture of the benches again, does the amount up there include the cement that was poured? Was that cement poured for that bench?
Right.
And so that amount includes the cement being poured as well for four additional spots?
I believe that was just additional staff time that did that, the, the concrete. Um, the bench itself is that cost divided by four.
So the concrete is something that the city just absorbs?
Yes.
And four, and, and, and there're going to be four more in staggered there?
Well, we, um, before these four that got put in, there was a list identified by the chair of eight spots. So the first four we put in will then prioritize the four best views, if you will. And then now we will go and fill it back, fill with the extra four.
Thank you for that. And if we can go back to the very first slide on there, the gateway sign, uh, the gateway sign, um, there is, uh, first of all, I just wanted to mention one of the, one of the lights are out, so we want to, um, but i- is there, is there an actual conceptual plan for what the commission envisions for that area?
Not, not yet.
Okay, so it'd be, if, if this was approved, it'd be allocating the funds and the commission would then have to come up with some kind of design for that area. What could it do there? And you said drought, drought tolerant plants was the goal. Okay. And then my, my last question is the flag giveaway. Is this the American, what flag are exactly?
American flags.
The American flag during certain holidays?
We just want to give it out so that way we can show our patriotic spirit to the community for those that can't afford an American flag. So the plan was, I believe there's 40 flags we can get without that cost.
40 flags, and like standard sized slags or the little?
That, that was to be discussed, but, um, yes, we are looking to at least have some, um, flag available for the community.
Okay, thank you very much. Those are my only four questions. I just want to commend the commission for, I know this is not an easy task, uh, for the reasons I, I outlined earlier, uh, is that where they're kind of still figuring out this process of how, how these TOT funds are to, short-term rental TOT funds are to be, to be utilized. And I, I commend the commission. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Mayor Potem?
Yeah, I have numerous questions, uh, and for clarity purposes and other reasons. It said in the report on July 20th, staff had a public meeting to discuss the projects before. Did staff invite other commissions, the public, FosBra, other partners via email or social media?
To my knowledge, no.
The report says, um, invites were sent out September 12th to commissions and partners with responses needed by September 26th. It seems for commissions to get items on for agendas for dialogue, that is a small window of time. That may not bring the best dialogue of creativity. Will or can staff provide increased time in the future for dialogue with commissions or city partners?
The short answer is yes, we will provide more time in the future.
So this is a very quick statement. The goal of the program was brick and mortar projects. As you saw a list of projects earlier from last year, uh, that would set the test of time such as murals, uh, benches, gazebos, signage, et cetera. With the commissions and city partners doing a voice in improving our neighborhoods as the commissions and are the voice of the residents as such. And I, we moved this forward, um, years ago, following the concept of Monterey. Uh, and it has worked over there. And, uh, sometimes we thought if we didn't need to reinvent the wheel. Um, my questions will be sort of kind of guided in that direction. The neighborhood improvement, and I think Mr. Miller has it correct. I saw two months listed and you already have $15,000. I mean, that program is already funded as such. If this program has been going on for years and no visual costs, why now? How does it long-term improve the neighborhoods as far as my vision? The, the goal was brick and mortar items. Also, is this a necessity? And if it is a necessity, why not we budget for the item?
That's a good question and I don't have the exact answer. Um, there is the liaison and one of the chair, uh, one of the, the commissioners here that could probably answer that question a little clearer than I could. So we can do that during public comment or I can have them come down now.
That's, that, but, so I just continue on?
Yeah, ask your question so we're, so.
Okay. Neighborhood watch, I believe my memory, cause I follow neighborhood watch pretty closely. Money was budgeted for last year. And again, the goal of the program is to brick and mortar, so residents can see results. What was the money used for last year? Was it used at all? Uh, and what is the vision for this year? Because it doesn't list it in the report that I saw.
My understanding of the neighborhood watch program is primarily including signs and getting the community aware that it's a neighborhood watch community. So you can see those signs in certain, um, neighborhoods, if you will, that are more on, like, um, almost like a street sign. And I know they're on Hillway and I've seen them there, they're identify like, you know, this is a neighborhood watch zone. If you see, see something, say something, things of that nature. Um, that is how I know the neighborhood watch program. If there's additional pieces that are involved with it, that I would have to refer it back to the commission liaison.
I, I would just say this, I know Councilman Miller, back in the day, expended numerous dollars on the signs, uh, throughout Seaside. And just to get the clarity, if this is for more signs or this is for education, which in my mind doesn't meet that need. Um, and I warned, pre-warned the police department, the high five program. Initially, this was said, that's would cost us no money. Um, did other department leaders present the ideas? Uh, and again, I'm not for that. How does it improve the neighborhood? And how long? And how is this a long-term neighborhood improvement?
To my knowledge, I don't know about the other department leaders about presenting. However, my understanding of the high five program, it is to assist a resident that may have challenges when it comes to maintaining their yard. So if their yard is overgrown and troublesome, the high five program, they would be identified and then we would go and assist them with beautifying their yard by pulling weeds or cleaning it up a little bit to make it presentable in the community.
Okay. Um, we have in a plant's area for Cuttino Park, a fitness course, um, as far as they face. The fitness area, I'm talking to FosBra members, who's the hands-on group of people that are involved in the, um, that park, uh, and have done a lot of work on that park. Uh, and I know they're here, so maybe if I'm wrong, please apologize. What I heard them say on more than one occasion, their priority is in playground equipment or playground equipment says in more than one. And a gazebo kind of like Havana Solus with a top on it because that park is open to the, there's no trees in the middle of that area. It just opens space without no trees and, and a barbecue area is such a large park it is. Uh, as in Havana Solus might be a thought. Uh, and then, uh, why was this not considered? And I assumed, um, I assume that the council can add, make suggestions as to the fitness center. And my suggestion might be Laguna Grande Park is a community park and we're trying to improve the community and neighborhood as well. There's a playground area by the, uh, playground area. That's a nice grass area. It might be a thought process because it gets a lot of users, a lot of walkers, a lot of fitness people to use that area. Any thoughts on that at all? Or is the Parks and Rec stuck on, on, uh, bad or good on neighborhood, on the Lincoln Cunningham area?
So the Lincoln Cunningham, it, there, it, there's some reasoning to their, their, why they picked that park. Initially, the Parks and Rec Commission just wanted a fitness course, right? They wanted a fitness area somewhere. Myself as a liaison to the Parks and Rec Commission, I did recommend Lincoln Cunningham, knowing that the fitness area was in the conceptual plan that was approved. And now that we're currently doing construction for Lincoln Cunningham, it made sense to go in and put a, a project in now because we already have construction crews mobilized. The cost would be less, they're doing the ADA trails and that, um, we already have kind of like the footprint area for it. Um, we were, we knew that the commission wasn't going to be able to ask for a lot of money. So they figured that that cost would be beneficial at that park, knowing that those ADA improvements, which is always a heavy, um, extra cost when it comes to putting new, um, equipment in, would be challenging elsewhere. Um, when it comes to Cuttino Park, yes, there, you know, wasn't the plan to have, um, a fitness area there. But then once again, we're talking about the cost because we would have to go in and put a paved trail around the park like we discussed. And we saw what the cost is for the paved trail at, um, Lincoln Cunningham. So it is kind of extensive when you, when you go that avenue, when you're trying to add more equipment into an area that doesn't necessarily isn't set up for it. I do agree with you personally with the, uh, fitness at Laguna Grande. I think that would be a fantastic spot. However, I do think we are going to have the same, um, challenges, if you will, when we talk about putting it in and getting the ADA access. We do, we will be doing the trails there soon, um, with the grant funding that we have. But also knowing that the NIC funds are kind of contingent on being done within the fiscal year. So getting a project at least under contract before, um, June 30th may have been a challenge in some of these other places if we didn't have all the extra funding.
Yes, I'll try to phrase it as a question if I can. I concur with the logic as far as saving money or, cause you got work on it, but when it's not the the leaders of that park that don't seem to be interested, I question that. And it should, we shouldn't do things to save money, but do things in the best interest of the community for a long-term impact. A- and that's my concern to do things. I like the, and also maybe other question part of it, the fitness course will be making a 75 or 100 feet by 100 feet. It's not stretched out over a, a long period. It's a, it's a block of fitness areas. And could those block of fitness areas, let's say 10 is the norm, couldn't you do five now? Whatever, whatever money there is and then five in phase two? I guess that's my question.
Yes. I would, I would just jump into Mayor Potem, but these are recommendations, so nothing is said. So when you're saying what they can do, what they can do, that, that'd be on us.
Okay.
So.
What is, again, it doesn't list, so for the community, to, for the community to be aware, and I read it three times. It doesn't say what Capitol Park revitalization is.
So I know that the chair of the Neighborhood Improvement Commission, um, wanted to make sure that after the vandalism occurred at Capitol Park, that they just put $25,000 into that park to kind of help it out and get it back to strength. Um, so there was, there was an initial 25. There was no rhyme or reason to what that money would be go to. It'd be go to, you know, more of the stewards of the park to help the garden get started. help the garden get started, clean it up, and really, you know, give it a makeover. And then the conversation came up to add barbecue areas as well. So that's where the additional twenty-six thousand came through. Was barbecue areas and maybe a burger if the, um, the funds allowed for it.
So what you're suggesting, if, if I heard you correctly, is twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars for barbecue pits because of, because of certain incidents that occurred and inviting the public more use of that area? Is that what I heard you say? Is it to be more specific as far as the report goes?
Yes.
Good. And then my last question. And you mentioned in, in your, uh, first of all, I want to, well, not lastly of all, I want to thank you and the city manager for your, the work on bringing a lot more sensibility to the proposal than the meeting, uh, one, uh, I think has come a long way. I think it has a long way in further to go. My last question though, and I might have misheard you. I don't think so, but software. The city is, the NIC is not recommending, but it's a, how is that working as far as their recommendations? Because it's not a recommendation as such. It seems to be a necessity. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I'm just asking the logic.
And I, I included that is because that for the short-term rental program, we have a software that's involved with it that manages the, the short-term rental program. So that cost is absorbed between the um, NIC, fifty percent of that software cost comes out of the T O T allocated to NIC, and then the other fifty percent comes out of the other allocation for the housing fund. So I put that in there. It's not one of their recommendations, but that money has to be taken out of their allocation.
And that makes to me a total sense. Uh, and I appreciate your time on the questions, and can thank the city manager and yourself for your your help, uh, bringing this together for discussion.
I just want to be, I just want to put it on the record, right? Say that again about paying for the uh, web service?
There's a software that the city uses for the short-term rental fund. And that software's uh, subscription cost, I don't have the total amount, but yeah, so fifty percent of it is allocated to the NIC comes out of the NIC funds, and then fifty percent comes out of the short-term housing funds.
Thank you so much. I, I think there's a better process for that. It, it has to be just take it off the top. We have to pay the bills off the top. And then everybody else get their money. You know, it don't make sense to split it in half, it didn't take two halves. And that, yeah. Just going forward, I, I would suggest that to the city manager, and he'll make a determination what's better. Um. Again, these are recommendations that have, to my understanding, that have not been vetted by the city to understand the true costs. Can they be done? Do they make sense to be done? Can it be done legally? Can it be done in time? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And we do that because why would we take staff time to research all of these twenty projects? You know, engineering time, calling consultants, calling people to for bids and all that, when they may not get chosen to, to be done. So we don't know the true cost. We don't know if they could be done. We don't know how much sense they make. And that's what we're doing now is accepting that recommendation, so we can ask the city manager to look into can these things really be done?
Correct.
Okay, alright. Uh, Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and and thank you to Councilmember Pacheco for those questions. And he was instrumental in, in this, getting this for the commission. And he understands about what, why this was, you know, why this commission was, but, but tonight, you know, we talk about brick and mortar, but there's no policy or there's no written anywhere about what the NIC can use. So there's, there's still that confusion about, is it really for certain types of projects or not? Um, and I myself am confused about it. And, and we want to, um, and although the brick and mortar are great projects and do improve our neighborhoods, but part of the, part of the neighborhood and the neighborhood watch, when I was on the commission, we replaced all of the neighborhood watch signs in the community, and we started holding meetings. And we started holding meetings, and the first meeting, ten people came, and then twenty people came, and then thirty people came, and fifty people came, when, when we did it at a market in Seaside. And for me, that's neighborhood improvement. Because we're improving the safety of the neighborhood, we're improving a, a collaboration between neighbors. We're improving that neighborhood. And so I, I do not believe that every project needs to be a brick and mortar project, and some projects just make sense because they're going to improve the neighborhood, the lives of the people that live in that neighborhood through safety or through other means. Um, and so, uh, I, I just wanted to, to make sure that, you know, in, if we, if in the future, we're going to to have them only do certain types of projects that's outlined in advance. Um, and, and I, I understand the mayor completely that we're, we're, they're asking, can we do this with this amount of money? And, and in the last, historically, sometimes it didn't work out. Sometimes the amount that was allocated was too low, and so they didn't do the project, and that money went back into the general fund. Um, and I saw that two years, three years, and four years ago. So if some of these projects don't work out, then they don't work out. But uh, again, I, I do support this list. Thank you so much.
Uh, well, I'm just going to jump in, then I'll come right to you. Uh, uh, again, this is accepting the, the things that they're saying they, they would like to be done. This is not agreeing. The council's not voting to do these things. We're accepting it so we can pass it to the city manager, his team, and he will go through to see can these things be done. I, I want to be clear for the public. For example, right? These three benches, that four more beds they're talking about funding. Staff has not cost that out. Right? The mural, staff has not measured where it goes and how much it truly is going to cost. Or talked to the, the muralists to see if fifteen thousand dollars would cover it. Is that true?
Correct.
Okay, so let's not get bogged down into, is this a worthwhile project? When the city manager brings them back, then I think people can and uh, articulate and advocate for the projects that they think should be funded. And then, uh, the majority of the council will, will work as well. But this is not the time and place, because we don't have the basis to, you know, you could say no to everything. But it's not being presented for you to say yes or no at this time. It's being presented so we can get to staff, and we can get more information because, um. Let me just use this for, I'll just take another thirty seconds. Um. You know, fifteen thousand for the uh, landscaping gateway sign. We don't know if it's fifteen thousand dollars. Right? I mean, they just put that there, and maybe it's a little bit more, maybe it's a little bit less. But before the council goes, we should have a more, um, um, true number. And so, uh, Mayor Potem, and then we'll hopefully, you know.
Yeah, just one more question, and I don't know whether a resident asked earlier during the conversation. Um. The, the accessible, accessible playground equipment at Laguna Grande Park where playground equipment is very, that costs seventy, sixty thousand dollars. And the cost of playground in general is pretty expensive. That's what possibly why the discussion of that amount. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, playground, I mean, it is very expensive. There is, depending on manufacturer or whatnot, and the time of year, you can find things that, you know, are relatively, you know, cost-effective, if you will. Um, it just really depends.
Yeah, and I agree with you. I would just point you out, playground cost can cost from fifty thousand to two hundred thousand, depending on the size, if it's accessible or not. And we've learned that through the uh, accessible playground equipment at um, Laguna Grande. Thank you.
No, that's fine. Uh, yeah, I mean, playground equipment could go up to millions of dollars if you want, right? And so what we want to do is over time, build on what we, what we already created, you know, phase by phase, so to speak. But no, I just, you know, something you said earlier about, you know, depending on what, what you said about playground equipment, kind of like you said, depending on what sale is going on, right? And so I, I just say that, I just say that to say, sometimes we do that too much. Sometimes we go, not you, but sometimes we go for the sale item, and the only one losing out is our kids with some of that equipment. And I know that's not what you meant, but I, I'm just putting a point there, because sometimes it costs what it costs uh, for that equipment for our kids or our families. Or the workout equipment for some older adults. It costs what it costs. And so, uh, let's go to the public. Thank you so much for the presentation. Public comment is open.
Boss backup? Boss. Hi, Shonda LeBeuf, co-chair for the NIC. Um, we took this very seriously, unfortunately. Um, we did have, um, issues. We didn't have a liaison. We had problems with not having a liaison during our um, time. But, um, some of those costs, we did estimate going with the costs. Um, for example, the benches, um, we did have, we were going by previous costs um, that we went with when we bought the benches previously. As for the playground equipment, um, and the adult fitness equipment, we have, we had a, I think, a, a cost of like a hundred and seventy thousand or something like that. We have that amount, and we gave the Lincoln Cunningham Playground Equipment seventy thousand dollars. Um, we are replacing that equipment. And, um, because there's nothing there currently, so that is to replace the, the equipment that is, uh, the, the playground equipment that is not there. But, um, we took those, we took these, um, recommendations seriously, and we put a lot of thought into them. And, um, as far as we're concerned, they meet the NIC's purview of improving Seaside's communities. Um, whether, they're not brick and mortar per se, but they are improving the communities in our, in the city. And for the be- beautification and the enjoyment of our neighborhoods and our citizens. So, um, we hope you take our recommendations. Um, and you really, um, think about all the time that we did spend, and, um, you seriously consider them. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janie Reese, and I'm with Friends of Seaside Parks Association. And I'm here today because I'm a representative of Lincoln Cunningham Park. And, um, I'm one of seven stewards that have been advocating for this park since two thousand nineteen. And it started out by, um, trying to get California natives into a park that was basically nothing. And, um, those stewards have been like vigilant to try to make the park a better place. And with the help of the rest of Fossil, we've spent, um, lots of hours to try to make it a greener, more welcoming place. And today, um, we want to thank you so much for what's happening right now in the park. The, um, the new um, pathways are going to transform that park into something, um, really beautiful. And we also want to thank the NIC for their recommendations for Lincoln Cunningham Park. And we want to thank the Park and Recs Commission for thinking about Lincoln Cunningham Park. Um, but we really wanted to be clear about the things that we and the neighbors that we've talked to really wanted the park. And that is definitely playground equipment that replaces the playground equipment that was taken out a year ago. And then the second priority would be some kind of a picnic area. There's very little seating in the park that is from the basketball court eastward. And, um, there's no shade at all. So we're hoping for some picnic benches, a barbecue, um, and some kind of a shade structure to make the park a lot more welcoming for the neighborhood. And, um, we think that these basic needs are what's important to go into the park first. We think these are kind of the essential things that make a park a park. So, thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name is Ben Strickland. I'm a member of the, uh, Homeless Commission. Uh, I just wanted to say, and looking over the, uh, work plan of the Neighborhood Improvement Commission, that I, I do support it. Uh, I appreciate all the hard work they do for the betterment of the community, and I look forward to working with them in the future. And I'd be interested to hear what, uh, work they do in the, for Neighborhood Watch in the future. That's something of interest too. Anyway, thank you.
Ray Reardon with the NIC. Um, the Neighborhood Watch was asked by the police chief to take it over. He absorbed that, said he wanted to run that. So that's why nothing, uh, I shouldn't say nothing, but he requested that. And so we let our hands off on that. And then, uh, the High Five Program, we were led down the path that this was going to be a great thing to do for people. But we didn't look beyond of, well, is that house, uh, in six months go back the same way? Do we send out another, uh, two thousand dollars with the work? Nothing of that's been set in, in, in there, and I don't think anybody looked at that. Because if an elderly person can't clean it up now, you think they're going to go out there and clean it up, uh, you know, three months from now? But that's what's happened on those two. And so I don't mean to throw the police chief under the bus or anything, but he, he, the Neighborhood Watch, we were doing that. I was doing it with Alex, and, uh, we were making good headway, but he wanted to take a hold of that. So, that's all.
Rochelle Christopherson, um, twenty-year resident and a member of the Friends of Seaside Park Association. I mentioned earlier that these council meetings never fail to inspire. This meeting is not an exception, and I just, I want to thank the Neighborhood Improvement Commission for these great ideas. Um, I want to thank you for, you know, considering them. I hope that you do, um, resolve to, you know, adopt them and get those details in order. Um, and I am part of the, the Beta Capra, a group in particular, so um, looking at Beta, um, those funds that would go toward um, not only putting some real money into that food garden, which is a unique food garden started by Beth Rocha, who has put tireless effort into starting that and maintaining it. Um, uh, that anyone in the city of Seaside can go and harvest. I think that's a unique thing. Uh, both with the Havana Solis Food Garden and the Capra Food Garden in this whole peninsula. We're growing food that anyone can eat, and it's just wonderful. Uh, so this would put some real money into getting more community engagement in those, in that food, food garden, as well as revitalizing that barbecue area and the, um, lower playground area, which it's, it, that park is adults. Mostly adults are using, especially that lower part of the park. And in light of the recent vandalism, I think it would be just wonderful to honor that use of that park with, you know, some substantial improvements to that barbecue area, and also transforming that lower playground area into, um, more seating for the parents who can then watch their kids play in that upper area, and eventually we'll add more up there and more seating in the upper area to take advantage of those views. Um, but we just, that park is just wonderful. Um, we do hope in the future to also get that ADA, um, parking and some more ADA pathways into that lower area. So, um, all of this would go really far to, um, to just improving that park. It needs a lot of love and really appreciate any consideration of it. So. And to all of the parks, you know, this, this whole commission list is just so inspiring to me, and, um, yeah, I hope you adopt it. Thank you.
Mayor, uh, City Council, City Manager Joe Kabbage, um. I really wanted to touch on the, uh, bench program um, that you're implementing. I'm General Jim Moore. And I've stated once before, um, and I'm stating it now again, that I'm seeking, uh, the opportunity to sponsor one in honor of my loving father, Johnny D. Kabbage, uh, who's been dead two years now, and his grave still sits empty. And I'm waiting on the feds to conclude the investigation associated with those who violated him and and financially abused him through racketeering and corrupt means. It's heartbreaking. Um, all I can do is, uh, move forward and, um, hope that those who took an oath to serve and protect their nation are vigilant. And, um, in supporting me and trying to, uh, find some closure in my personal life. However, uh, it would be a great privilege, um. to have an opportunity to sponsor a bench in my father's name, Johnny D. Kabbage. And then I just want to touch on a couple of other things lightly. I noticed that there was a, I think it's Adam L., Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is something that I am very close to. It's very close to my heart. And I want to, I want you to know how important it is that you recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month roughly, you know. I'm not a physician, but roughly about 250,000 women are diagnosed with breast cancer every year. And about women between forty and seventy years of age on average go through one mammogram, one every other year, five in a ten-year period. And so I urge those that are genetically predispositioned, that have cancer in their family, if they self-exam in the shower, you notice a lump, you know, talk to your physician, get a referral to your oncologist. And something that I do want to point out that's very important is that a lot of women don't understand is that in the mammogram process, there's exponential amounts of radiation in every very sensitive tissue area. And if you put the breast in and, you know, the process, you press it. And if there is a tumor there, it could potentially be ruptured or severed, which the cancer will then metastasize. So if you are genetically predispositioned and you do find something like this, please speak to your physician and your oncologist. And last but not least, I'd like to say that I see behind me President Barack Obama, a man who I highly respect. And today just happens to be him and Michelle's wedding anniversary. And so I want to wish President Barack Obama and Michelle a happy anniversary and thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Ramona. I just wanted to say that the monies going for Capa were to fulfill the master plan. That's why the barbecues, et cetera, it wasn't all for a vegetable garden. So if you look at the master plan, that's what Emily was trying to get after. Thank you.
Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you, Carla Lobo, here as a commissioner for Parks and Recs. Parks and Recs is the only commission that has a master plan. Whether it was approved seven months ago, the process was over a year. Fossa, Sustainable Seaside, we're all parts of creating that collective master plan to facilitate throughout all our parks. Though they're great stewardess and they've had conversations with our community members, everyone had a voice at that table to construct that master plan and then the conceptual plans that came after with Havana Solis, Lincoln Cunningham. Now, our recommendation did take into account pricing, took into account what current projects are being done with the city, how we can combine that so that we are hitting every part of our master plan because we have put it in our working plan. So this all hits items within our current working plan that facilitate the master plan. So when we say that, oh, well, we're not communicating with our partners that work every day at these parks or that stewards, we are, we did. When we had that master plan, when they came down and said, this is what these parks need, this is what we perceive in the future. So it would be great to have these partners come in and give us these ideas and give us their additional support in what we've already created so that we can funnel that as one one piece and one voice. Right now it's several voices and to have the mayor say, oh, we're just looking into this. Some of these we've already looked into specifically with city, city staff and those projects that are coming down the pipeline. Now, the process in general, I don't know how the NIC does this process. But I know that the process from last year to today and this year were completely different. So whether there's a policy in place on how they maneuver those every year, perhaps that's a, an avenue to explore. But when we talk about the actual ordinance of the Parks and Commissions and all the commissions in general, that hasn't been changed for seventy years. Now, Parks and Recs don't have their own ordinance. We fall under the, the entire ordinance that has not been changed, which is probably why there is no specific direction in each one of the commissions in order for us to streamline this. Because at the end of the day, you're approving these. And when you come back and say, oh, this can't be done for this, that and the other, there has to be processes and in place in order for us to be able to maneuver that. That's where the lack of communication is coming, the lack of transparency for us to make these decisions specifically when we're working with so many voices at the table, so many commissions at the table. We were told last minute, but we already had this in our working plan. So it was easy for us to plug it in and have firm numbers on that. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Diane Nielsen, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. This is a, not an easy, this is not an easy thing to decide because there are so many variables. There are working with the community members and park stewards and volunteers who have done so much in our parks and wanting, you know, I feel like they're, the community members and the park stewards especially, who spend so much time there, they really have an idea of what they'd like to see in their park. And yes, we do have a, a master plan. And for instance, the adult fitness course, like Dan said, that this, you know, was an ideal location because of the work that was already being done. So that was why we suggested it go there. But it doesn't have to go there. Money obviously is, is not, the prices aren't set. So like the mayor said, we, you really don't know how much these things are going to cost. There's just so many moving parts here. It's it's hard to figure out on, on the beginning levels. I know in the city of Monterey, they have neighborhood associations with presidents and such that help neighborhoods decide what they need most, but I don't think we have that here in the city of Seaside. I don't know of any neighborhood associations. So that's one thing that we might want to look into. Neighborhood Association as Neighborhood Watch and maybe a monthly meeting or something if a neighborhood wants to create an association for like Del Monte Heights or some other area. And also, I, I don't believe that the High Five Program really fits into the Neighborhood Association. It is something that is more of a, a maintenance thing. I mean, if somebody needed a fence or something like that, I could see where that would be longer, a longer term thing. But I, I just don't see how it really fits in to the Neighborhood Improvement Commission's wheelhouse. And the last thing I wanted to ask is aren't staff reports supposed to be made for agenda items? And I find that that doesn't happen with the NIC. And I don't know what other commissions, but it would be nice to see staff reports.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment on this item.
Thank you so much. Add any further comments?
Just, thank you. First of all, the Parks and Recreation Department was started in the late sixties under Cleve Williams, the first black Parks and Recreation Director in the state of California. So we proud of that. The first master plan that I'm aware of was in the eighties or nineties generically. And then this is then the second one is, is last year, I believe. I think it's important to be blunt, the process here, this, the process did not work. There needs to be more time for communication. So that way FOSF talks to Parks and Recreation, that talks to city staff that, and there was that, there was a two-week opportunity, so notes were not shared. The concept, and I totally agree with Mr. Alexander, was not put in cement as far as how to proceed. But I can say that it was copycated and stated on the dais as the city of Monterey where they do brick and mortar projects. So that way you can see the results twenty or thirty years ago from now. That was the goal where few, smaller things that go away in six weeks or a house that doesn't, it doesn't get repaired two months later, we're spending more money. So that's an issue. So that's why the brick and mortars that were listed are significant. How many positive comments have you received about the, the benches on General Moore Road? That's huge. The, the sign at Canyon Del Rey plus countless others. I believe, and I think the mayor said it, I hope, that we need to do things best for the community. And the easiest and the cheapest is not necessarily the best thing for the larger community for a long term. It can be immediate fix. It can be easier. We got to find the best long-term solutions that will reach the most people. And I'd like to add one suggestion real quick. The flag giveaway is a good idea. I would like to see, we have brand new mediums come, just throwing out two ideas. We have brand new mediums coming on Fremont. Maybe it would be nice that who in that neighborhood would put brand new flags on those holidays, on those mediums that are brand new. Another idea might be a bench recognizing the veterans at the cemetery. I mean, that way it's stable. All the residents can see it, be it the flags on the mediums for that. And I just wanted to throw that as a potential idea. Thank you so very much. I appreciate your indulgence and time with that concerns.
Anyone else? You know, well, what is the, I'll speak on the question. Whoa, what is the will of the council?
Move approval.
I think it's been probably moved in second for accepting these recommendations. That's all we're doing here tonight. And could you go up to, oh, my question, could you go up to like the first slide? I think it's like one or two slides? Yeah, okay, now back that one right there. Director Nielsen, I mean, yeah. Where is that statement at as it relates to the work of the NIC?
It was on the city webpage under the NIC's page on the city website.
So when I read that, it's pretty clear what their objective is. So this conversation about they're not sure what they should be doing, and I'm not saying they're saying, I'm just saying I heard it up here. It's pretty clear what, what they have the empowerment to do. And what my thing is, I don't think we should shrink it to what we think we want to vote for and support going forward. They should gather all the information they think they need to gather to come up with the recommendations they think they need to recommend it. Because sometimes we heard brick and mortar. Some, I don't know, sometimes it's not brick and mortar. Sometimes, I don't know. I mean, but I don't think we should just shrink their universe of conversations. Now, it's going to be some things when this thing come back that three people going to agree with and three people won't agree with. That's our responsibility. And, but you can sit down now. I'm sorry. I just, it was just that one question. I wanted to be clear. That is something that's not made up. That's been with this group for a long time, since its inception. So it's pretty clear that they are to advise the council and matters pertaining to general improvement of the neighborhood in the city of Seaside. They should interpret that the way they can. But to say that because some of their recommendations don't get three votes up here, we're, people are talking about the pass and I just want to correct stuff because what we've done over the last couple of years is we just accepted the recommendations, turned them over to staff, and if something was written down, it costs seven thousand, but it costs twelve thousand, we had to figure out a way to pay for it or it didn't get done, right? I, I forgot, you know, and so the object is, is to have more information to get to the council. Staff looks into these things, give us a true cost of how much it costs. Those benches don't cost seven thousand dollars total if we didn't include the cost for the cement foundations. That's money comes from somewhere, right? And if it wasn't in the general budget, that means we went over the budget. And so we're finding it somewhere. And so we have to get better as, as a council, and that's what I'm trying to do. So the conversation shouldn't have went to, are these things viable or not? Until the city staff says, this is what you have, this is what you should work with, maybe it costs more than what people recommend, maybe it costs a little bit less. And then the council can make determinations there. And so I guess the, the next question is, maybe you know, Director Nielsen, so the city manager knows, when would these things come back for, you know, adoption by the council? And I, and I, and I don't think it makes sense to wait for the very last one to be locked down on how much it costs and how to facilitate it. Some of these are pretty straightforward and some of these may not make mustard because there may not be a, a right thing to do as you look at the constitution. So.
If the council directs staff to take a look, take a look at the, this list that was presented, we will bring these back certainly before the end of this calendar year. And make, provide further information on cost and feasibility and schedule on at least eighty percent of them.
Okay, that, that's one thing I forgot to mention before, just for the people at home. Because we didn't do a good job of doing that before, so many things that we budgeted, I think last fiscal year fell into this fiscal cycle, you know, and that's what we tried to do is nail down the time of when finance could tell us, how much pie do we have? And give the NIC enough time so they can think through it and work with the other commissions and the community members. So it could be reviewed and then a lot of them get done during that budget cycle, that, that year. That's what we're trying to do. So you can see your work being done. And sometimes they will, sometimes it's just the work, you know, like fitness equipment, right? You, you won't get that done within that nine months, ten months, because it's just ordering it and all of that, as far as my understanding, right? So those are just my closing comments. Is there any, any more? Is there any more to, yes, sir?
Is it possible, and I, I don't that what you heard tonight from the residents and from the council as far as suggestions to bubble that up and to accept their ideas and suggestions as part of the recommendations? Or are we just limited to what the NIC presented? I don't know who should.
I'm gonna start off, I'll start off. Because I don't think the other, other four of us put anything on the table to have, to have staff look at. So when do we get a chance to say of the, the things we think should come out of that? There's only four thousand dollars left. Right? First, we got to do what NIC, look at what they said they recommend with the wider community, what they recommend. So when we throw in our suggestions, where did that money come from? Does it come out of one of their projects?
Well, if nothing else, I was, the, the FOSF group recommended some things that they saw as priorities. And I was wanting at least not mine, but at least their ideas be thrown into the mix. That's all I'm suggesting, be it the gazebo. And yeah, the gazebo and the picnic tables and the barbecue pit because.
Well, what, no, what, what I want to say is we're accepting the NIC recommendations, right? And so is that what we want to do, you know? I, I, I don't see that, I don't see that, that right now, the appropriateness of that, because that, that wasn't on the agenda to, 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 to take suggestions from the community. And that's unfair. Now, I'm sure it's a process where FOSF can share their thoughts about what they want, but we shouldn't jam them in to what the NIC recommend, because I think the NIC. about what they want, but we shouldn't jam them in to what the NIC recommend, because I think the NIC, this is their work plan, and we got enough struggles with that, if that makes sense. Uh, and so you want to add?
This is not the last $398,000 the city's going, going to get. So, so there, there was a process and people can, you know, a lot of people have given voice to these recommendations that are before the city council. Staff, and we have four meetings before the end of the year, staff will uh, review these. If, if the motion passes, staff will, will review these and provide um, information to the council on their feasibility and cost. For next time, there'll be another $400,000 next year. And, and if a interest group in this city doesn't get everything they want exactly how they want it this time, that doesn't mean they're not gonna get everything exactly how they want it next time. So, so, you know, every now and then city councils do have, have unhappy problems to solve. This is a happy problem to solve, folks.
All right, you think it's happy. All right. Uh, Councilman Miller? Yeah, one more, one more last comment now. And, and, and I completely respect this, this statement up here in regards to the mission of the Neighborhood Improvement Commission, because I've read that many times. And it makes perfect sense to me, except for the word neighborhoods. Because we have areas like our downtown area which have houses that people live at. Is that a neighborhood? This sign right here is not in technically a neighborhood. And that's, that is the word that I struggled with when I was on the commission. What does that mean? Where, where does that, because the project's in here and the bench is up there, you can make an argument for both sides. You can make an argument that all of these touch the neighborhoods, or you can make an argument that some of them don't. And so that was the struggle that I had, although this makes perfect sense. Um, that was my struggle. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I hope it does. You supported that one. But, but I'm, I'm not, I'm just gonna push back a little bit, then we had a vote, right? You cannot tell me when you look at that, and I know you're not saying this. You can, no one can tell me when you look at that sign and know where it's at, you forget that people live on the other side of that building. That's their neighborhood. So don't, don't tell me, everybody lives in a neighborhood in this city. It's your neighborhood. Everybody lives in the, uh, uh, where those benches, and some people don't like those benches because they're looking at their backyard, that's their neighborhood. Right? I'm just, I'm just giving you an example of how far some things are from people, but that's still your neighborhood. And so can we work on, you know, some of the wording to give them a little more clarity? Then yes, it's just tonight wasn't tonight to settle that. That's a long conversation, because again, you guys will want to weigh in as a council. Um, and so I would just call for the question, if we could, uh, all those in favor use a regular sign of voting, which is aye. Mayors have the same right.
No.
Listen for, uh, one no, listen for uh, the stenches. Uh, motion passes, uh, was a four to one, zero. Uh, this is a time for a recess. Staff is requiring a recess, so we were recessed for a few minutes at the sound of the gavel.
Return it from short recess. We'll move on to item nine B, adopt a resolution to approve an agreement for the purchase of real property at seven oh five Broadway Avenue, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff has a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of City Council, my name is Jose Bazua, acting assistant city manager. It is my pleasure to present this item tonight. San five Broadway Avenue, situated at Broadway and Alhambra Street. The building is about approximately sixteen hundred square feet. The lot is about four thousand square feet. It works if I do this, right? There you go. The opportunity is to build a mixed-use commercial and residential project. The vision, the property would can be consistent with the West Broadway Urban Village specific plan. It would also provide affordable housing units. This will, this is an opportunity to change the skyline of Broadway Avenue and provide affordable housing in the center of, in the center of the city. The idea is that this project will encourage property owners to follow suit. This is also providing anchor, which will stimulate the local economy along Broadway Avenue. The listing price when it started was at one point two, then at one point one, and then the seller accepted the city's offer at eight hundred and seventy-five hundred thousand dollars. The recommendation is to adopt the resolution to authorize the interim city manager to execute the documents, the contract and the attendant documents for the acquisition of seven oh five Broadway Avenue for eight hundred and seventy-five hundred thousand dollars. That concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So thank you for that great presentation. Are there any questions? Our council member, Miller.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Is this something that, you know, we construct or affordable housing here? And this is, would be seen as maybe the vision or some kind of start to something downtown? Does that wouldn't it be accurate to say that?
Let me see if I understand the question. What you're asking is, is if this is going to be planned to include affordable housing and then later on develop? So I'm trying to understand what you're asking.
I guess what I'm saying is, is that if we take ownership of this and build something here, is, is that like the start to, to, to something in the downtown area or?
Yes.
It is.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so affordable housing is on the top and on the bottom, in the vision of, in your vision?
The, the design of that is still in the works. That's in the future, but the vision is to create a mixed use with affordable housing units in this area.
Thank you. And that vision would go coincide with our West Urban Broadway Village vision?
That is correct. Let me see if I can go back. Yeah, let me see.
Is he?
One more there. That's the West Broadway Urban Village. You can see, it's, it's hard to see, but on the top portion, there's a red square, so it lies within that mixed use area. And it falls within that vision to create a mixed use project that will have affordable units in that area.
Got it. And do you think that when we go through with, if we go through with this and, and build this or plan out affordable housing units, that maybe other owners of properties down there might, that might have a reaction to them?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Garcia Arizola?
Thank you. And, and again, I just want to clarify, this coincides with the urban village plan that we had in place, that been in place for several years now with the city of Seaside, right?
That is correct.
This is the first step in making that vision a reality and finally pushing Seaside into vibrant downtown, correct?
That is correct.
And this is a perfect way for the city to take ownership in creating that tourist environment that we wanted and providing affordable housing, mixed use development, and increasing our housing numbers that we needed to, to achieve.
Absolutely correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
By mixed use, can you define that? It's, it's not just different levels of housing. There might be a business or two in that mixed use, or so that way the residents have a place to potentially shop in that area as well as other areas. Because obviously more people will bring more business to West Broadway.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I just, just want to be clear. This is not the first step towards envisioning West Broadway Urban Village. One of the first steps is redoing the streets. Right? And one of the other ways was investing and putting some money down there for the restaurants to stay down there that's down there now. The other, another, and I'm not saying it to you, I'm just putting out to eat them, right? Another step was buying, purchasing those parking lots around there. So we've been taking many steps over the last four or five years and councils before us have moved it forward. And this is another step to purchase a property to do mixed use. And, and my understanding of mixed use by definition means housing and shopping. And but, but, but but you did say, I thought you said you weren't sure whether housing would be downstairs or where the, the retail would be at. Wouldn't the retail be on, on the first floor and housing above?
That is correct.
I mean, you know, well, it, it could be, but more than likely housing would be, not be on street level.
Yes.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure that people are out there listening. But I, I, you know, this is another step in the many steps that councils have been taking from that original award-winning plan that we have. So thank you so much. I'll open up the public comment. All right. No, I do have one last one. I'm sorry, somebody. I'm sorry. What was the appraised value of this property?
The appraised value came at eight fifteen.
Okay.
And we're buying it for eight seventy-five.
Okay. Because of what? Could you, could you talk to why we're paying a little bit more than what it's appraised of?
For
Like you said, the guy was trying to sell it for one point two, but that's, you know, let's put that on the record for it. That's all.
Oh, absolutely. The, the benefits of purchasing it over price is number one. As I think council member Arizona says, this is gives us a starting point or a footprint. Number one. Number two, it, it helps the same, I think. I think the mayor pro tempa Checo said, said so is that now it allows us to continue with that visioning, to move into a tourist type, develop the services, the shop in the housing in the downtown area. So we paid a little bit more to get to that vision. So we were still under the asking price to put sixty thousand over the appraised price that can be recaptured as properties appreciate and as we find temporary tenants and develop that site.
No, it wasn't a question of value, but I just wanted you to lay out for the public is, you know, this is what it appraised for, but I mean, I think it's a lot of people in the public understand the appraisal on a house is one thing, but what it's selling for is another, right? So they understand that. And I think when this thing first start, well, I know when it first started, you entered in the conversation with the owner starting at one point two. Right? So you're, through your hard work and the same magic, you guys were able to get it down to, was it eight seventy-five? So we, I appreciate that. So thank you so much, so much. Because I do think it's a, no, it's fine. I'm just talking. I do think it's a great value to make sure that we can look towards mixed use development on that parcel because the object is to put affordable housing on that property. That is the main goal of this purchase. Public comment is over.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. Just for clarity, are we saying that the appraised price for it, we're paying more for it? And the reason why we're paying more for it is so that we can be the beginning stages of what a mixed use would look like in downtown Broadway? Or is there another reason why we ended up paying more, like additional water was added? Which goes into my next question. The funding sources or revenue to use to, to purchase this, what it, what was that? What type of water allocation does this building have? Though the plot is a lot bigger, only sixteen hundred square feet is the actual building. Will there need to be rezoning and what would that look like? And back to water, do we need to do infrastructure? And if so, what is that going to cost us? And those are the rest, my only questions. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Peter Kaiser, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Good evening, City Council Mayor, City of Seaside. I think we need to be very careful here. I just drove by the big project next to the post office and that used to be a few empty lots and now it's gone up maybe five stories and it's, it looks like a big box. It's, we need to have things that are designed to fit into the neighborhood, not overwhelm the neighborhood. So if this is sixteen hundred square feet, that's the size of a a nice house in, in Seaside, sixteen hundred square feet. So I hope we don't have what's called stack and pack. If you drive south from San Francisco, there's a whole row of houses. They're six inches apart and they're two stories high. So I think we need to be careful. We have a, we have a suburb, suburban town here. So I think we need to be careful. We have a, we have a, a suburb, suburban town here. We don't want it to make an urban town. We want to have things that fit into the neighborhood and look beautiful, just like the, the city hall is an award winning building. I think it's actually a basement, maybe two or three stories. And then they wanted to build a fourteen story hotel across the street and we knocked it down to twelve. But that hotel does, I, doesn't fit into the neighborhood like the city hall does and the lake. So, uh, we have plenty of cities that have huge buildings and so forth. So we, we need to have this design to be beautiful. And we don't want the city getting into the business of buying property and designing, um, properties and so forth. We want to have people that are private enterprise, doing things beautifully and designing things well. And, uh, that's what's important. So thank you very much. Let's be reasonable here and make it beautiful and make it fit into the neighborhood. Thank you. Peter Kaiser.
Thank you for your comments. Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment on this item.
Uh, thank you so much. Um, seeing no one else, public comment is closed. Uh, bringing it back to the, uh, council, what is the will of council?
Will approval.
Second.
Probably move to second on, on the question. No. Okay.
Just briefly, um, first of all, I think that the area on Broadway where the housing are, that was a dirt lot for twenty or thirty years. Uh, I think that's important to understand. We also need to understand that housing is a serious issue in Seaside. Be it a eight unit apartment complex or a hundred and six apartment complex. Personally, I believe the facade on the Broadway will bring, enhance that area. And I also believe that as this project will, will bring tourists, I'm sorry, will bring residents to the stores on Broadway. Uh, east, west, south, therefore it will also, if I'm correct, bring additional businesses because there's residents there that will come down the block to use those services. Therefore, more businesses seeing the more residents will be more willing to invest. I think that's part of the goal of the project. So we appreciate, I appreciate your concerns, but we are trying to do our very best to improve the housing element of Seaside because there are countless people that don't have a place to live. And I think, and also to improve the facade of Seaside and also to get more tourists uh, to Seaside. And, and I think it's a global thing that circular thing that you have to have people to go shop and you have to have pretty buildings. So people want to come to you and that's the goal of this council, I believe. Uh, to meet those needs of our residents in the best possible way. Thank you, sir.
Mouse? I, I, I would just, I don't know if we need to go back to the picture, but I'm, I'm trying to just, you know, it was only a couple of comments of, uh, you know, from the public anyway, but just so we're all clear. What are we talking about if we're not talking about investing? Well, I want the bigger one for the West Broadway Urban Village, right? What, what are we talking about if we're not talking about investing in ourselves? Right? And, 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 you know, it was a couple of days ago, I think someone told us, hey, why is Seaside selling all this property? Now we buying property, right? But the point is the West Broadway Urban Village has been a vision for this city. I forget exactly when we adopted it. I don't, it close to, close to twenty years, close, right? Uh, maybe about two thousand and ten, maybe, maybe seven, right? But, right? But my only point is, that's what we're trying to do. This is nothing, nothing new, if that makes sense, right? This is nothing new. We've been working on a staff, been working on that plan for that length of time. And I think to the, whenever we adopted it was fourteen, fifteen years ago, staff probably worked on it for three years before then. What I'm getting to is now we have an opportunity to invest in our own community. And when you talk about how do you, you want people living downtown. And so I don't know when we'll be able to, you know, tear it down, build it up, put the housing up there, but that's a goal. It takes time until we get to that point. I guess, you know, we'll do whatever we need to do with the building. Um, but I asked the question about what was the appraised value? That doesn't mean that's the value it has for us. Right? Uh, and so I'm comfortable going forward. This is another step in our movement to create the West Broadway Urban Village and, and someone talked about, you know, eventually water will be there and, um, and we can move forward. Uh, but until then, uh, we'll just, uh, maintain that building, put something down there and, and do what, um, what we should be doing with it. I, I just want to take another thirty seconds. There was also a comment about the embassy suites doesn't fit in with our community. That's our largest hotel, a big driver for income here. And what would we have done if it was only two stories tall, the way they wanted it to be? Right? In the past. So I don't find embassy suites to be an eyesore and, and I, and I, I push back when people try to continue to talk about Seaside and the embassy suites, like we're not supposed to have nice things because they're tall. I don't hear anybody talking about the Intercontinental Downtown Monterey, how it doesn't fit in. I don't hear that. And so we can't fall for that as a community. We deserve the best things like anybody else on this peninsula, on this county, in this county and this region. Um, and then the seagrove. I, I don't, I don't know what we would have done or people would have done if the developer, first of all, they came with the two or three stories, not five stories, right? Three story. If they would have came in and they said, we want to do three stories, we want to build a hundred and six units of housing down there. And then this council said, no, you can only build forty-five because we only want you to be two stories tall. That's what we're talking about. And, and I'm not just pushing back at that one individual. I'm pushing back on it. It's been people in this community that says, hey, it's too big. It's too tall. It doesn't fit in the community. That building fits for the next forty years from now. And it's up for those buildings across the street and around the corner to go up. It's not for us to be stagnant for the next forty-five years. That construction, that seagrove, well, hopefully I'm here to see forty-five years from now. I know you, young people will be here to see it. But that's what we're talking about building. And so that's the goal of Seaside moving forward, not standing still saying, because across the street is two story homes, two, I mean, two story apartment builds, built thirty-five years ago, somehow you need to match them. And that's just my two cents. This is a good idea. We're taking a stab at another step of mixed use down in our urban, West Urban Broadway Urban Village. And so I support, uh, the purchase of this building for eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, on the question, all those are favorable to the regular side of voting, which is aye?
Aye.
And they just had to say, right? Here it is. I always have a motion carrot. Uh, let's go to item number ten, council members request, A, new council members request. And I, I want to be clear, uh, okay, there's no request at this time. And of course, okay, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Cancel member request. Uh, I, I just want to see if we can review water allocation credits and provide, uh, options for additional water for eighty years.
Any other? Okay, let's go to ten. Uh, B, follow up on previous requests. Uh, city, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. We have a very brief, uh, presentation answered, uh, this outstanding question.
What do you need, Mayor and members of city council? My name is Jose Bazula, acting assistant city manager, and I'm presenting the follow up question to council member Arizona that you presented the last, uh, council meeting. So, uh, car week, city of Seaside, uh, began, uh, August the twelfth through the seventeenth. On August the twelfth, we had Porsche, uh, Monterey, uh, classic. Then we moved on to August the seventeenth, concourse de Le Mans, uh, concours italiano, uh, exotics on Broadway. Now let's look at the numbers. So, uh, the estimated visitors during, uh, this week here in Seaside, the car week was about approximately thirty-seven thousand people. Uh, approximately, we have in the city of Seaside, seven hundred and seventy hotel rooms. Uh, the average hotel occupancy rate in the city of Seaside at that time was eighty-five percent occupancy rate. And during that week, the embassy suite was sold out. Fiscal impact, the monthly T O T increase from July or August was approximately twenty-two percent. The ripple effects on businesses, restaurants and shops, when we did the follow up and talked to them, they all were positive at the event and they all made a substantial amount of money during that week. That concludes my presentation here. So any questions?
Uh, council member Garcia Arizola?
Thank you for that presentation. Just to confirm, uh, does the T O T act increase or? I'm assuming that was a bit of typo, but shouldn't it be from August to September and not July to August since car week was second week of August?
Good question. Some of the, uh, hotels have not provided the total T O Ts. So what I ended up doing is I had to work backwards and get a baseline in July and then August. And then the ones that did provide us the information, get the average of that. And that's what I came up with the twenty-two.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Uh, I think I got two, uh, relatively easy questions and, and then a comment. You, you said that, uh, well, how many people came?
Approximately thirty-seven thousand during that week.
Yeah. But I thought we, when we reported a, the, the week after, we said twenty-seven thousand.
We, I got the information from the presentation that the director news, uh, put forward. Uh, there were about twenty thousand for the seventeenth and then during the week was like three thousand, three, three thousand, two hundred, thirty-five hundred. So I added all in during that week to showcase the amount of people that were here during that week.
No, I, I, I misread it.
Okay.
I missed it. Um, I thought you just meant for that day. Okay. No, that's good. I do have one comment. It's kind of off. But, uh, I know our local restaurants were overwhelmed with, um, uh, people using their restrooms, uh, because they're attending events. So I thought that out for next year, but that was a comment and I want to respect the businesses. And what it was, was I think they were on the Fremont area, Fremont street. So I don't know if we have restrooms over there, but we don't need to worry about that now. That's, you got enough to do it, but that's, that's what I'm hearing. So I just want to pass it on before I get, um, anyone else? Okay. Thank you so much for that closeout of that one.
Thank you.
Next we'll go to, uh, item number eleven, city attorney, city manager, city council and mayor's comments and reports on committee assignments. Uh, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Um, I was honored to have been incredibly busy over the last couple of weeks. I was able to attend the FOSPA park cleanup in Havana Solis Park and was able to transplant some strawberries, among other things. Um, I also attended the ribbon cutting for the new park equipment at that same park, which was a lovely, um, event. Um, the art walk and art show that happened on Friday and Saturday, I was able to attend that. I was able to attend the N double A C P, um, annual banquet on Saturday night. Um, and the Wahaaka by the Sea event on Sunday, which was wonderful. Um, and multicultural. It was just a wonderful event celebrating the culture of Wahaaka and our citizens, um, in Seaside. Um, I also, uh, was able in the last couple of weeks to attend the statewide Brown Act Committee that I sit on with the Cal, the League of California Cities City Attorneys Group and was able to introduce our C S U M B interns to that and provided them with a homework assignment relative to that a particular committee. Uh, and that concludes my week in review.
Uh, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I was, uh, so busy. I didn't, uh, put together a list, uh, but tomorrow, uh, I'll, I'll be entertaining the interns here, uh, about the, uh, the majesty, which is being a city manager.
You must've been very busy, very busy.
Uh, council member Miller. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it was nice to sit with the, all the council members at the fifty-second, excuse, uh, fifty-second life membership banquet with the N double A C P. That was a fun event and as well went to the, uh, park cleanup and ribbon cutting at Havana Solis, which was wonderful. And the Wahaaka by the Sea out front. So, uh, big kudos to council member Garcia Arizona for, uh, spearheading that. Uh, what a wonderful event. And that's my favorite event of the year. I think I've included. And then tomorrow I look forward to, um, lunch with the business council with Don Addus. Thank you very much. That's all I have to report.
Council member Burks?
I went to my very first FOSPA park cleanup and it was very educational. I learned about gardening. The city girl doesn't do much of that dirt stuff. Um, but I got to learn about, um, hay versus straw, um, and clean a couple of, uh, beds and do some planting. Um, and then of course Havana Solis had their ribbon cutting that same afternoon. Um, I also attended the fifty-second N double A C P life membership banquet. Um, very awesome to see all the hard work that's going into our community and our members and our very own mayor received an award at the event. Um, and then I was at Wahaaka by the Sea and again, thanks, uh, to council member Arizona for all the hard work and getting to see our community together, seeing students, families, um, everybody happy and celebrating culture. Thank you.
Council member Garcia Arizona?
Yeah. So, uh, I attended the region, since our last meeting, I attended the region board meeting where what, business as usual, but one of the things that struck me the most was the school engagement program that Regent has in place. And noticed that there was only one school out of the list of roughly around fifteen that were in Seaside. So really pushing forward and trying to get them to come into Seaside to teach her kiddos and, and educate about composting, recycling and uh, all the important things of preserving our environment and putting forward that. So they, they have a sort of like a grant program that they're going to these different schools and, uh, creating little groups. Uh, they call them leaders, green leaders. I think that's what they call them. Um, and, uh, they come back every so often to check the progress of the school and how that's doing. So I really want to see how we can implement that in Seaside. And I've been sort of talking with, the department over there. Uh, I also attended the N double A C P dinner. Uh, congratulations to, uh, Mayor Ian Elsby for, for that award. Uh, and for putting Seaside again, um, on the map. But that's important that Seaside showcases, uh, what we have and, and we need to celebrate that as well. And I was there alongside council member Miller, uh, council member Pacheco and councilwoman Burks, um, and city attorney was there as well. So good to see her there. Uh, the following day, uh, Wahaaka by the Sea, as people have mentioned, and, and although y'all are saying, thank you, I do, I, I do think, thank you for that, right? But, um, I want to give thanks where credit is due and, and that's all Daniel Muir is because during, during the time that I was out because of medical leave, Daniel, uh, took that upon himself to, to really spearhead that event. And I, I appreciate him for that because I, um, you made it happen. You made it a reality. So when I came back and I was like, what's the plan? You, he already had it all laid out. So big thanks to him, to fire, police, um, and all our community members that were there. The council showed up strong as well and a beautiful day as well, sunny event, businesses were happy, um, and looking forward to fifth year anniversary next year. So let's see how that goes. Um, I also attended the Siembra Latinos event, uh, fundraiser where they celebrated Dr. Magaña. Uh, Juan Magaña, that's, this was the first year that Siembra Latinos Fund, which is an affiliate fund of the community foundation Monterey, uh, hosts as an event, a fundraising event, uh, in Seaside. It's usually held in Salinas Valley or South Monterey County. So for them to come over to Seaside and uh, really showcase, uh, the beauty of what they do and the, the support that they provide to nonprofit organizations. I think it was just important for, for them to, to be here in a community like Seaside and highlight those and uh, showcase that we also can cater to these types of events. Uh, and today I attended the Village Project Annual Luncheon alongside Mayor Pro Tem Pacheco and the mayor as well. So, uh, wonderful, um, updates from the community and, and just enjoyed it all around. So that's it for me.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Uh, I attended the N double A C, uh, program as well. Uh, I think what's nice to see is people from out the peninsula joining us at that event because it was a full house and because it was a full house and celebrated in Seaside. Again, the Havana Solis ribbon cutting, uh, it's nice to see our parks move forward, and that's part of that. Attended the mayor's for peace program, uh, Seaside is a associated with that, and Catherine Crockett should get lots of credit for her effort with that. Uh, the Lincoln Cunningham Park, uh, Trails Program, uh, the mayor and I were that, and I just wanted, this is my, this council could have chosen to do this in phases. That was a recommendation over three years. We stood forward together to make it happen now in one year. I think that's significant as talk, and as it relates to the overall development of the city. We're taking steps now to move stuff forward now rather than stretch it out over decades or years. Things are happening now, and the Cunningham Walkway is just part of that. One year, we, we gambled on it, and we made it happen, and we should, the residents and the community and FOSPA should be commended. Uh, Bill Project Luncheon again was a full house and a lot of people there, a lot of community leaders. Uh, I attended the Miss Gal Neal, um, Park Cleanup. Uh, again, FOSPA does a wonderful job, and their input and ideas and recommendations to move this further forward is a much appreciated. They're a partner with the city, and I think that has value and, uh, and I appreciate all they do. And Wahaque by the Sea, we all attended, great community, a great, a lot of positive energy. And then I also attended the Seaside Artist Tour, that Sandra Gray is part of that, as well as local artists throughout Seaside. I think there was about eighteen local artists in about seven different locations, uh, celebrating, uh, artists and their efforts to make, uh, our neighborhoods better, art in the community better, and it's just a positive for everybody. That's pretty much it. Thank you, man.
Uh, thank you. Um, attended the Monterey Council Business, Monterey County Business Council, uh, they gave a report, uh, that is, I forget the guy's name, but they had a professor from, um, I guess down, down south, UCLA, I believe. But he gave to talk about can Monterey County businesses compete? And one of the things that, and it's a report out, and I'm gonna make sure I forward it to the city manager for his review, but, uh, they talked about Monterey County as a whole and in Seaside, they broke up all the cities. And the report was really geared on how can you, you know, keep your economic development going? What is it that happens in your city that moves your economic development forward? Uh, but for every city in Monterey County, particularly the peninsula, one of the challenges came down to housing affordability. And the main answer that he gave was, uh, you have to build more housing. You just have to build more housing. People cannot afford the housing that is here, so you have to get to supply and demand, and then you can work your way out. People could stabilize. So I think we're on the right track as we advocate for housing, but all the evidence, all the experts say the object is, is to build more, uh, multifamily housing. Um, uh, he wasn't talking about single family housing, it's about multifamily housing that either reduce the cost, and that goes into what my theory is, build smaller. Um, went to the ribbon cutting for Havana Solis Park, a wonderful, uh, park being, uh, the, the update that happened there was, was, was great. A lot of in-house work, so we appreciate the leadership from the city manager and the Reg Department and Public Works and all, everybody worked together and really refurbished that portion of the park, uh, in-house, and people are enjoying it. Uh, like the mayor Potem said, we attended the Lincoln Cunningham Kickoff, uh, uh, program, um, to update those trails up there the best we can. And I think we all committed to the phase approach, which is do as much trails as we can, do more trails, throw some equipment in there, throw some, um, uh, playground equipment in there as we have money, and, and keep doing the other parks too. Um, went to the, uh, School Bond Kickoff, a wonderful event and a well done. And everybody should look into, uh, supporting our schools to the best of their abilities. Attended the Peace and Justice Center event, like the mayor Potem said, Mails for Peace. Uh, gave some, uh, uh, comments, uh, before I had to jump off to another meeting. But what the Peace and Justice Center and that, that group does, Catherine Crockett and that group does is wonderful. Uh, and so we appreciate the work done at the Peace and Justice Center. Attended the N A A C P Annual Dinner. Uh, it was good to be in the crowd with everyone else. And I believe that, um, a lot of people in the community, I know a lot of people in the community really appreciate having the council, uh, city attorney there. So don't, I don't, I don't want the council members to think it's not important that we show up sometime en masse, uh, as, as a city. Uh, and then attended the LAVCO Regular Meeting. I gave a welcome to the Annual California Conference of Directors of Environmental Health. Uh, they had, they had, I'm sorry, they held their annual conference in a beau, beautiful Embassy Bay Suites, right? Attended a TMC meeting, uh, attended a Leadership Council Special Meeting where we allocated some more money, uh, to different housing of, uh, people without proper shelter down in, uh, King City, and, and we're trying to support more of those actions that are taken in, um, Salinas. Uh, attended the United Negro College Fund Dinner, uh, over there at the large Spanish Bay area. Uh, and really what we're trying to do there is how do we partner with them in the years coming up to, um, facilitate more grant fundings coming back to our youth here? Uh, and so that was a good event to be at. Uh, and that discussion and, and that leadership is, is taken on by, uh, Dr. Betty Lust, uh, leading that charge as a, uh, community member. Uh, attended LAVCO Budget and Finance Committee Meeting. Uh, again, we adopting the budget, the budget is, audit came through, we're looking good on the audit, all the money's accounted for. I think it was yesterday, I attended the Woody's Restaurant. Um, they are number one restaurant, number one airport restaurant in, in the nation. And sometimes when we talk about the Monterey Airport, we, we just assume that's Monterey's airport. No, it's Monterey Regional Airport. That means it's Seaside's airport also. And so we should take pride, and you guys should go up to Woody's every once in a while and spend some money. Um, uh, because they're the number one airport restaurant in the nation, I believe, for the second year in a row. Second year in a row. Attended the Water District Legislative, uh, advocacy committee. Uh, we're just, you know, trying to legislate at the, move legislation at this federal level and at the state level, uh, some of the bills that we're advocating for, or we're still waiting to be signed and still waiting for that money to come down as it relates to, uh, our, our will and things like that. So we just need to be on top of, of that legislation as it passes. Like the others, I want to thank the, um, the League of Women Voters and Sustainable Seaside for hosting a candidate's forum. Again, they did a wonderful job to, uh, provide information for the community to make judgments as they see fit as the election is coming up. Attended a press conference yesterday with Assemblymember, uh, Don Addus and her, uh, passage of A B thirty two, thirty three, uh, is called the, um, what is that called? Uh, environmental, what, what? Yeah, local transparency. Uh, and so really what it's about is more local control as it relates to oil and gas drilling, uh, in the communities that people want to drill for oil and gas. Uh, it gives the local community a wider voice, uh, to advocate for or against those type of things. And so we want to, uh, say a big thanks to our assembly person, um, Don Addus and her team. And then, of course, uh, the Speaker, uh, the Honorable, uh, Robert Rivas was down here yesterday, including Senator Lair and, um, um, uh, Majority Leader Emeritus, uh, the Honorable Bill Ammani was also in attendance yesterday. And they, and let me not forget, our supervisor Wendy Esquie and her strong support for that bill and advocacy, uh, helped push it over the top. Uh, and they, they did mention, uh, Mr. Mel Mason for his advocacy also. Uh, as I'm almost closed, I, I want to just take a, a, a moment and thank Sandra Gray and her team at the, um, you know, Art and History Commission and whoever helps her put up this art show. Uh, they did a wonderful job. Uh, we, we met down here for the reception itself. It wasn't a lot of people, but the citizens of Seaside should really come down here and read some of this history, uh, particularly as it relates to the establishment and incorporation of the City of Seaside. It's wonderful history. Uh, it's your city history. You should see what fights and challenges that the leaderships in the, in the day had to go through to get this city incorporated. It wasn't easy. No one gave it to us. Uh, and so when we're talking about moving in the future, when we're talking about building stuff, when we talk about taking our rightful place, uh, for people, you know, I don't care how long you lived here, for you to say not to do that, uh, then, then you need to come down here, look at the struggle for, for what people did to make sure we carve out this community, uh, one of the most diverse communities, uh, definitely in the county and this region, and we have to make our way. Uh, so come on down and see that, and then inside here, we have these wonderful pictures drawn by the late, um, what, what's this? Jody, Joly, Jody Gully. Uh, and so I just, these wonderful pictures. Uh, and then, of course, you can't, cannot say too much, great things about Wahaque by the Sea. Uh, excellently done, well done, a wonderful reception for our community members. Uh, and again, we want to thank, uh, Councilmember, uh, Garcia Arizona for the first vision of this years ago. Uh, and, and, and really the leadership that you gave, because it shouldn't take you to be here overseeing it. That's, that's the goal of, of getting something done. And then Mr. Dan Mewes, the, uh, Rex Director, the, all the people to put it together, the Parks Department, the City Manager, Tom and everything, uh, making sure we had all the money for everything we needed. Uh, and in the future, if we do need money for more bleachers, then we need to pay more money for more bleachers. That, that's just throwing it out there, right? But it's a wonderful thing, but we want everybody that comes to at least be able to sit down. And so I thought it was a great event, um, and the community thought it was a great event. And then my last thing is I do want to celebrate or just, uh, shout out to our city attorney for her, uh, leadership on her statewide, uh, city attorneys or attorneys, uh, working group uh, as it relates to the, uh, Brown Act. I go to these statewide meetings, I'm on a couple statewide boards, uh, as other members on this, uh, panel may be, but, uh, when you go there, you see city managers, you see city attorneys. Um, but it's, it's four hundred, was it three hundred and fifty eight, I think, cities that are, uh, members of, uh, Cal Cities. And they, and you don't see three hundred and fifty eight attorneys, right? You don't see three hundred and fifty eight times five city council members, right? So it takes that leadership to say, I want to be part of this and go and attend these conferences and be a part of those working group, uh, to do the work. So I just want to say, we appreciate our city attorney, uh, being part of that scene, uh, statewide, because it makes a difference when they say, what city are you from? And everyone else says, you know, I'm from somewhere else. They can't be from Seaside, right? I'm, you know, they're from somewhere else. I'm just saying, some are big and some are small, right? And, and, and it makes a difference if you sit next to the city attorney, or you sitting, for me, sitting next to the mayor of, you know, San Bernardino or Fresno or Salinas or things like that. And so I know it makes a difference when our city manager and our city attorney are sitting next to their peers, uh, from cities with a hundred thousand people and up seventy thousand people and, um, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand people have been there. And they're sharing what they're learning by networking. So I want to appreciate them taking the time to do that. I would say, let's go to item number twelve, which is closed session. I would ask the city attorney to read us in a closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Council will meet in closed session to discuss one matter of public employment pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven. The position in question is the city manager recruitment. Uh, item B is a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point eight. Property in question is a portion of twelve seventy one Canyon Del Ray Boulevard. Agency negotiators are the city manager at all. Negotiating parties are Palenque Arts, buying through Juan Sanchez and the City of Seaside. Under negotiation, price, terms of payment, or both. They will have a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point eight. Property in question is commonly referred to as Campus Town, which is bounded by Highway one, First Avenue, Seventh Avenue, Light Fighter, Colonel Durham Street and Giggling. Agency negotiators are city manager at all. Negotiating parties are KBB Seaside Venture and the City of Seaside. Under negotiation, price, terms of payment, or both. And finally, they will have a conference with legal counsel pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D two on two matters of potential litigation. For the benefit of the public, I do not expect there to be any reportable action coming out of tonight's closed session. That concludes my read in.
Uh, thank you so much. We will open up public comment on our closed session items. Public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. My first question is with regards to item A. Is this in, uh, in relation to the third party company that we hired, consultant that we hired, uh, to facilitate the recruitment? My second question is with regards to property twelve seventy one Canyon, item number B. Where exactly is that located? Because when you actually put that address in, it gives you, um, NBC Suite. So are we talking about the property right next to Chili's? Are you have the rest of my question? Are you have the rest of my time?
Yeah.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment on closed session items.
Uh, public comment remains open. Uh, thank you so much. Public comment is closed. Uh, City Attorney, uh, are there any questions or issues or concerns you can answer at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, with respect to the commenters. Uh, first question related to the city manager recruitment, it is exactly as it's stated on the closed session item. It's related to the city manager recruitment. And with respect to twelve seventy one Canyon Del Ray, um, yes, that is the vacant, uh, dirt lot that is adjacent to the Chili's, um, building.
Uh, would we work to clarify that next time? Because if that address, does that, you know, that, it was said that address comes as NBC Suites, so I don't want anybody to think we're negotiating selling NBC Suites. So can we better document exactly the property?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move into, uh, closed session.